We're live.
To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen.
If you want to access the translation through the website, mark the word English to change it to another language. To indicate your desire to speak in the meeting agenda, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if you have access to the meeting by phone. If you want to speak in the meeting, you must raise your hand before the public comment begins for the item. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment.
Dr. Hurst, can I please have the roll call?
Absolutely. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Foltz?
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler?
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Good evening, President.
Trustee Christian?
Good evening, President.
And our student trustee Emiliano Anlon is not present. Everyone else is accounted for.
Thank you very much, sir. We are now going to go to public comment. This is general public comment on items that are under the jurisdiction of the district but are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, there is one hand raised.
Okay. Going once, going twice, gone. Please call on the one person.
Okay, could Mr. Scott Rafferty, if you could unmute?
Thank you. I want to thank the board for its decision to allow the independent commission to have an independent demographer and counsel as required by the stipulation. However, I am concerned about the role that Lozano Smith has played. They committed to a federal judge on March 26th to notify the applicants within a week. They didn't do so for a month. There is unfortunately an eligibility issue regarding one of the appointees which has not been resolved. And I think it's important to make this work, not only because it is a requirement of the court order resolving the voting rights issues in the district, but also because it's likely the only model that school districts will have for independent redistricting in 2032. So I hope you embrace this unique position that you have and fulfill the requirements of the decree. And you certainly will have the cooperation of the plaintiff in doing so. So, thank you very much and have a successful retreat.
President Phillips, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. This evening, we have one item. And excuse me, I keep looking away because I'm working off of two computer screens tonight. But this evening, we have one item, which is Governance Team Workshop. And it is a continued discussion of roles and responsibilities. So, what I would like to do before I turn this over, no, we'll just, we'll, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out how to do this. So I'm going to stay on the normal sequence. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Jim Brown from Leadership to actually facilitate our chair this portion, or facilitate this portion of the meeting. Board, please don't let me forget that I got to take, we have to take public comment on this item. And so that's what you saw me working through in my mind. So before we leave here and go to closed session, that we do need to do that. But Mr. Brown, floor is yours.
You're on mute, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much, Trustee Phillips, and hello to all the trustees from the district. It's good to see you again, and Superintendent Hurst. Tonight, we continue the discussion that began at our last board retreat workshop regarding superintendent roles and responsibilities. Before I turn this over to Juan Garza, I'd like to just recap briefly that the last meeting, we talked about the mission of the district related to the importance of teaching and learning. We talked about what is the mission critical work that people in the district do to achieve the teaching and learning mission with particular focus on the board and the superintendent. And then we begin to talk about what are the roles and responsibilities of each of those parties, the board and the superintendent, to achieve the mission and accomplish the mission critical work that you have before you. It was a very interesting discussion. It was helpful. We certainly appreciated the exchange of ideas that we heard from the different board members and the superintendent. And we think we've established a good foundation to move forward. If you recall, we were in the midst of a PowerPoint, I want to say presentation, but it was more than that. It was a presentation slash discussion about roles and responsibilities. And Mr. Garza, Juan, will you pick it up from there when you're ready? And we have the okay from Mr. Phillips.
Fantastic. Well, again, it's a pleasure to be back here with you. And I remember the couple of days we spent together in going through the process of selecting a fantastic superintendent for your district, the rule process, the interviews, but very effective in your selection. And I again commend you on that. Debbie, would you please put on the PowerPoint while I make a few comments and go to slide number 10. Thank you, Debbie.
Give me just a second.
Take your time. Well, while she's getting on the PowerPoint, I came on towards the last part of our last session, and it was a lengthy session, six hours. So you may have been a little tired by the time it got to me. But the information is important, and we were beginning to engage very, in a very healthy discussion on some of the protocols. What I'd like to do is go back to slide 10, which is a couple of slides from where we left off, and do a brief review of some of the key points to ground us in our discussion and ground us in our continued work together on the roles and responsibilities. We had gone through a few different items, and one of the key things that we began to hit on was the basics 101. I call it 101 with regard to roles and responsibilities. And we began to look at these graphs that showed on the left side, the role of the board, and then on the right side, what it meant for the superintendent. That was to establish the role of each, you know, those, in each of those areas. And I think if I were to look back at my 15 years of tenure as a superintendent in Kings Canyon Unified School District, look at the work that was happening in districts around Fresno County, and there's 32 districts in Fresno County, and then later in my last four years in working with leadership associates, a lot of problems arise when these roles and responsibilities are crossed by either of them. So I want to go back and review maybe one or two items from each of the three slides, go back to that activity and finish it up with regard to the what, new naming your what again, so that it can again ground us in our work. So the most important thing is you employ and direct the superintendent as a board. When you look at that on the left-hand side, this person is your only employee. And on the other side, the superintendent establishes the internal vision and establishes the management system that makes it all work. You allocate resources and the superintendent implements the agreements. And if you recall, I used the dollar bill as a sample of how your resources are used. And so that's very, very important. And tonight, we're going to dig into that last bullet, the evaluation process for the superintendent. You do that, and only you do that. And the superintendent evaluates staff and progress of programs. And I want to spend just a second on this because quite often, this creates, this role creates some issues. And I think that, you know, discussing this a little better or clarifying it is important. The superintendent evaluates staff and the progress of programs. Now, quite often, board members have concerns about the performance of specific employees, whether it be a principal, whether it be a coach at a high school, whether it be how a teacher handled the situation with, with a student or with parents, or the progress with programs in regards to student achievement, how are those going? There may be concerns about a particular program that's being used to assist and support students in learning. IREDAI is an example. There's a lot of different programs that are used. How do you go about bringing that forward, understanding that it's the superintendent's role and responsibility to evaluate staff and the progress of programs? How have you dealt with that? And if one of you or some of you can give some examples when you have a concern, how is that handled? Someone brings to your attention or you have a personal experience? Trustee Reckler, you're on mute, by the way.
Yeah, I know. Trying to keep the background noise down. But you don't have the concert tonight, so you're lucky. Maybe you'll get the French horn concert later. So I have in my one-on-one brought up various issues, you know, in private, completely incompetence, heard this, experienced this, see this, whatever it is. These are my concerns. This is what I think you should know. There may have been some discussion about how to handle it, perhaps a follow-up. Not for me, you know, because I'm handing this information over. But I've been pretty clear about staying in my lane, not handling, not handling anything myself.
Before I respond to that, anybody else have experience that they'd like to share in how they handle situations like that? A concern with a staff member, a program, something that's happening?
Is that the general protocol that most of you follow, or all of you follow, the one that was just outlined by Trustee Reckler?
I think that it's going to be a little bit interesting because we have a new superintendent. You know what I mean? So it's like, how, what do we do now? You know, does that make sense? Like, what do we do now with this superintendent, with Dr. Hurst, that may be in line with what we did before? It may be different because we're getting this governance training. My, for me, I'm talking to Dr. Hurst. So if I hear something, see something, say something. What I'm talking to Dr. Hurst. I'm validating. If I get it through an email, I'll validate that I've received the information and then say that I'm giving that information to the superintendent. So in that sense, yes, I follow what Trustee Reckler was saying.
Okay. Anybody else have that same, same process or procedure going with the information to the superintendent?
What is the expectation from you when you bring that information to the superintendent?
That was my next question. You read my mind, Jim. So, Trustee Reckler, we'll go back to you. What is your expectation?
I think it depends on what it is, quite honestly. Something may be FYI. I have a live incident or a live thing going on right now where superintendent is going to have to follow up. You know, this is something that's going to cross his desk. I'm not going to get involved in it or put my point of view out there, you know. So I think it depends on what it is. But certain things are going to, are going to definitely need follow-up. Some things are less important. Some are strategic. I mean, I think it's all over the board. But I think the important thing is that it's relationship-driven and it's confidential, and it's kept in that channel rather than out wherever it may be.
Do you remember a slide? It might have been slide number four. I don't want to go back to that slide, but the title, the top of that slide said clarity is important. Clarity, do you remember that? Okay. So, and I'm making reference to that because, you know, I think I appreciate what you, I definitely appreciate what you said, Trustee Reckler and Jamala. Taking it to the superintendent and sharing it is very important. But clarity, when you finish sharing what you're sharing with regard to what Mr. Brown said, what do you expect at the end of sharing the information? It's important that you use clarity with your new superintendent and say, I would appreciate feedback on the situation when you handle it. Or this is just an FYI to you. You don't need to get back to me. Or this is something I think you should share with all the board members. Whatever the, whatever the expectation is, clarity is important. So once that information is shared, Dr. Hurst is aware of what your expectations are and may discuss that with you or share that he agrees or disagrees, or whatever the discussion is, that clarity is important. Are all of you in agreement that that's a good protocol to have? You hear information, you have a concern, you take it to your new superintendent? And let's hear from Dr. Hurst on his thoughts on this.
I really appreciate both Trustee Reckler and Smith Foltz sharing what they shared. And I think I would go along with that line of thinking as well, that whenever there is a concern, that they come to me. But I can be very honest with you. What I typically do is I will follow up with the board member anyway. But I think it's just an extra if the board member makes it clear, hey, Dr. Hurst, you know, I would appreciate a follow-through on this. But just to let you know, I think the board members know that right now, that I'm going to follow through with them anyway. But just the extra, it would not matter.
What is the expectation around sharing the information that you bring to the superintendent with other board members? Is this, when an issue like this comes up, is it something the whole board should be aware of? Is that situation-specific? How, you know, because generally, you want, what one board member knows, you know, it's good that every board member knows. But this personnel area gets a little difficult in that regard, depending on the nature of the incident or what the concern is. But I'm just concerned that, you know, I'll start with you, Dr. Hurst. When somebody brings you a concern like that, what do you do in terms of sharing that information with other board members if necessary?
Yeah, I can honestly say it really depends on what the situation is.
Okay.
Yeah. Because board members have contacted me with certain requests or certain issues. And I've not always emailed all board members. And just to be very honest and be very clear, sometimes I worry about information overload and whether I'm giving too much information. And then just kind of referring back to what board members were saying on Sunday about, you know, how I communicate to them and what I communicate to them as well. So if certain things are an emergency, like we had one this weekend, I'm going to communicate to all board members on that. But if, I can't honestly say that if a board member asks me something and has an individual request about a staff member or about a concern, then I'm going to email everyone about that.
Okay.
Welcome to board members' feedback on that as well.
I think there's some trustee-specific stuff, trustee-area-specific stuff that, you know, I just don't think it, I don't want to know their stuff. They don't need to know mine. It's information overload. You know, it's just like, you know, community stuff. And there are some things that really, it doesn't matter. There's some other stuff, though, that is global. And in the past, I have made it a point to pull that out. But, you know, just for some of the stuff that's local, I don't think it really matters.
Okay, Demetrius, I think I saw your hand go up first.
Oh, thanks. So I agree with everything that's been stated. I think that if there's something that I think maybe the board members think it should be shared with the whole board, what I used to do with Mr. Duffy, I used to ask him, would you mind sharing this with the full board? Because I think it's important for everyone to know. I think that makes it easier. Or if Dr. Hurst, you think that should be shared with the full board, like, I'm totally okay with that and giving you that discretion. But I used to say that with Mr. Duffy. Now, did it happen all the time? Maybe not. But I think that I try to make that a, not an expectation, but just something I would share with the superintendent, like, I would exactly say that in my email after response. But I think, Dr. Hurst, you've been very responsive, and I am really happy with your communication so far. Just an example, we were discussing the Tara Hills issue. I don't exactly think that was for the full board to know, because I was asking you specific questions about an issue or on their budget. And you right away responded. So I'm really happy so far with the communication.
Trustee Smith Foltz?
I don't really have that much to add, except there's just the power in the CC. Like, if you CC on the board, I know it's for my information. I don't have to really respond to it. It's just something for me to intake. But I do like what Trustee Gonzalez Hoi said, is if I'm writing you something, I'm going to say, hey, can you share the response out to the board? Or if you think that you need to do that, I'm down with it. Because whatever I tell you, then I want my colleagues to know if you agree that that's something that needs to be shared with them. But I'm good for a CC.
Okay. Mr. Phillips, you had your hand up, and then you put it down.
Anything new to add? Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have an understanding of protocol here. And Dr. Hurst, if you could kind of put that in some kind of paragraph form, this is a protocol we agree to, that can be reviewed later on with the board, along with the others that we've had, that would be greatly appreciated. Is there anything else on this slide with board and superintendent roles and responsibilities that you'd like further discussion on before we go to the next one? Seeing none, if we could go to the next slide. So we begin to go a little deeper here with the roles and responsibilities in terms of the only action as an example comes from a majority of a decision of the board, and then the superintendent implements that, whatever that decision is. Any questions on this particular slide?
I think this is the one that we, as a board, may need to look deeper at because the what and the how, for us, because Mr. Garza, to be quite frank, we were into the how out of necessity. Now that we have Superintendent Hurst, we don't have to be into the how. So we need to learn how to stay into the what. So if you could give us like some more examples about what's the what and what's the how, I think it would be beneficial. I know for me to have clarity around what's the what and what's the how.
Okay. So if you can go back to that first slide where we began talking about the what and the how, we'll review from the very beginning. Okay, now we go forward again. I think there was a third one. One more. There we go. Okay, so this digs in a little, a little deeper in terms of the what and the how. In looking at budget, we talked about the dollar bill, and you adopt the budget, and you go through a few processes during the year where you review the budget as required by the county and the state. Then the superintendent implements it. A key thing with policy is policy, board policy is very, very similar to the rules that you have at home with your families. And, you know, I think I asked, you know, at home, you establish rules to maintain order. And policy is a way to establish order and understanding about what you as a board have approved. And it's very important, because some of you are new board members, that these policies on occasion get reviewed. And if not, when you're entering a difficult situation, often districts have policy on those situations. So it's okay to ask, do we have a policy that addresses this situation? Because before we move forward on discussion and action, our policy might, we don't want to act in contradiction of whatever our policy is. So you get policies from CSBA that are reviewed probably three or four times a year and updated, if you recall, through CSBA. And those policies are examples of different things that boards go through. And sometimes they refer to case law based on decisions that are made in districts through the court system. So the policies are very critical. So I would say, when you're having discussions that are intense or involve difficult decisions, ask, just raise your hand and say, do we have board policy on this? Oftentimes, the superintendent shares with you board policy in advance on a particular subject so that the board doesn't begin discussions contrary to whatever the board policy that was adopted was. So that's a very good example with regard to some of the decisions that you're going to get into, especially with personnel, handling personnel, and issues that arrive in other areas. Facilities and requesting future facilities, the superintendent, the board makes determinations about what their interest is with regard to future facilities for the district. But it's the superintendent who develops the plans and presents them. Budget as required by the county and the state, then the superintendent implements it. A key thing with policy is. Policy, board policy is very, very similar to the rules that you have at home. With your families and, you know, I think I asked. You know, at home, you establish rules to maintain order. And policy is a way to establish order and understanding about what you as a board have approved. And it's very important because some of you are new board members. That these policies on occasion get reviewed and if not, when you're entering a difficult situation. Often. Districts have policy on those situations, so it's okay to ask, do we have a policy? That addresses this situation. Because before we move forward on discussion and action. Our policy might, we we don't want to act. In contradiction of whatever our policy is, so. You get policies from CSBA that are reviewed probably three or four times a year and updated. If you recall through through CSBA. And those policies are examples of different things that boards go through and sometimes they refer to case law. Based on decisions that are made in districts through the court system. So the policies are very critical. So I would say when you're having discussions. That are intense or involve difficult decisions, ask. Just raise your hand and say, do we have board policy on this? Oftentimes, the superintendent. Shares with you board policy in advance on a particular subject. So that the the board doesn't begin discussions contrary to whatever the. The the board policy that was adopted was so. That's a very good example with regard to some of the decisions that you're going to get into, especially with personnel. Handling personnel and and issues that that arrive in in other areas. Facilities and requesting future facilities. The superintendent, the board makes determinations about what their interest is with regard to future facilities for the district. But it's a superintendent who develops the plans and presents them. Because often with facilities. It may have, since you have different areas, there are different needs as an example. And you may have a desire to see a new school in your area. Or to see a cafeteria multipurpose room added to this school. Or to do some some type of facility, whether it's a music facility or an athletic facility or. Playground addition to an elementary school, whatever that may be. You all have different areas and you all have different interests. So you can you can have requests for future facilities, but the superintendent usually goes through a very intense process. Of working with a firm to develop a facilities master plan and you may have a. A facilities master plan in place. Is it time to review it? Is it time to update it? So those are the things that the superintendent discusses with you in terms of. The plans and usually the master facility plan has an order to it in terms of. This is next on the list. This is the order of priority because with. When you have different board members with different areas and different interests. It can become very difficult. So the roles there are very important. Request is your role. Developing the plans, the options, reviewing with them, reviewing them with you and getting consensus on. Whatever the priority of that list is because. All of those things on that list and the requests that you may have as an individual board member are important. For two reasons, three reasons. One is. Serve students. Serve staff and serve community needs. And there's nothing wrong with any of those needs. It's just a matter of the prioritizing of that. And those discussions can get very intense when there's bond money available. Or when there's dollars that are available for facilities in some way, shape or form and or modernization dollars. What do we fix first? That leaky roof in this school? Or do we work with the air conditioning or the heating unit in this building? So all of those have their role with regard to roles and responsibilities. Any any questions on on the role there? Another another key area is new staff. You your district is very large in size. And you may have an interest in one of two things, a particular staff member getting a promotion. Or the hiring of a particular staff, a teacher, administrator, classified employee. That you know of that's applying or you've heard is applying that has a good information. The process, the 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 process is established through two things. One is board policy. Three things, board policy. Contracts and agreements with the labor associations. And Ed Code. So you have to be very, very careful about that. The su- the superintendent and the district may have. Well, generally, it's important that they have a procedure for the posting of positions, the. The review of the applications, who's involved in the interview. Who makes the decision to make the recommendation from the site, whether it be a school or a department. The food services or any of the other departments moving it forward to the process until it gets to you. Now, sometimes board feel like, well, you know, I can only. Why why don't I have a voice in in the interview process? Why don't I have a voice in in who is interviewed? Well, that's because there are agreements with the associations. That's because there's Ed Code. And all of those procedures are established within the system, so. You may question and or not approve of a particular recommendation that's being made. But not get into the weeds of the interview process or the recommendation. Or all of those things. Have any of you had issues with that or concerns with that?
Yeah, that's my interest too. How has that been handled? In the past, with let's say you're going to hire a high school principal. Or you're going to hire a chief business officer, a high level position in the district. Or a teacher, what what has been happening in the past? From the board's perspective and from Dr. Hurst's perspective, what's your expectation? Of how this can go. I think this is an area that is often. Contains some problems with it and clarity around this is really important. So what's been going on? What's the board's expectation and what's Dr. Hurst?
Trust you directly, you had your hand up and then President Phillips.
So certainly for somebody like a chief business officer, we have had. Roundtable diverse panels that have panel. Participants, I think some of them even came from you guys. So there has been community feedback in that in that process. Principals to, at least the ones I've been involved in is there has been community input. Community panels, there's been listening sessions at schools.
So there's been panels that have been involved, but have any board members been involved in those panels?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. President Phillips.
There there have been board members that have sat in on interviews in the past. Traditionally, what has happened, and we haven't had like a lot of big hires since the new board came on. But traditionally, what has happened in the past is the interviews have been conducted and trustee Reckler. Has part, and I think other people have too, actually participated in those interviews as community members. And now they're just on the other side of the curtain. But there have been those roundtables, those discussions or meetings that that she just described and generally recommendations have been brought forth. To the board and then the board has, usually there's one recommendation. And the superintendent has given like a description of what the process was. People have asked questions about the process if they had questions. And then they have. Basically voted. You know, on the person. I mean, that's generally what has happened in the past.
Let let me dig a little deeper. Has has any board member been involved in saying, I would like to see this person on the panel?
As an interviewee or as an interviewer?
As an interviewer.
So there are a lot of conversations that happen sometimes offline. And I'm not necessarily talking about like this board because this board is is new, but there's a lot of conversations that have happened offline. I mean, I've had people contact me and say that, you know, so and so. You know, that they're participating on an interview panel. Or express that they would like to to be there or or whatnot. I don't remember like a a a specific time where like a board member was like, put this person, you know, on a panel. I do know that, like I said, board members have sat in on interviews. In the past, I mean, how they did it, I'm not quite sure, but it came out that they did it. So I have seen that, though.
Mr. Garza, can you repeat what you just said? I think I missed. Can you repeat your question?
Okay, so it was mentioned that there were. Quite often panels with different representative groups, whether it's community members, staff members, so forth. On the panel and my question was, has there been a practice of or any board member saying? I would like to see. This particular person on the interview panel. Like request to the superintendent or to somebody that. A particular person be placed on the interview panel for the principal position or an assistant suit or. Whatever the panel is interviewing for. And Mr. Phillips says that not with this board recently, but in the past, he's aware, not. Quite sure how it got done, but that. Two things, one is there were board members that were part of the interview. One or more, and then second, there were requests for particular people to be put on the panel.
Okay, thank you. My answer was correct, not to my knowledge. I've never said. Just so my answer is correct, not to my knowledge.
I'll just say straight out from my experience and from different. Actual recommendations and even CSBA that. It's not recommended that board members participate in interview process of staff that's going to be selected. That's there. There's usually. Different constituents, different groups of people that are invited to be on a panel that represent. Whether it be the department that represent. The experience in that field or community input, or if it's like a. Football coach or or someone in that type of position, people that have experience in that area that have. Or it could be a booster parent from that particular field, but. Board members are not, it's not a good practice to have board members be a part of the interview process. And or also recommend certain people to be on the panel because then there's that expectation. Where that panel member that their voice. Carries more weight because they were recommended or placed on there because of the influence of a board member. So those are those are not good practices and I don't know, Dr. Hurst, if you'd like to to share your thoughts on that at this point.
Yeah, I'm 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 listening to you and and just kind of smiling, just listening to to best practice. I could share with you in the in the past, certainly. I've never been directed by a board member in my previous district nor in this district about. Any recommendations or hirings or participating in any panel either. So I appreciate hearing the best practice. I will say that we are in the process of redefining how we. Bring people on board here in the in the district and that groundwork is being set with. All the administrators across the board or actually all of the leaders. And it's a very collaborative process. What I will share is that I I listen. I listen to the board members as well, so. When I hear board members, even when I first came on board saying that, hey, we. Typically have a collaborative process. I mean, that's feedback for me and that's data for me, so I take that to heart. So that's who I am anyway. I collaborate, so. We're opening up, say, for instance, the CAO position, it's a very collaborative process where we have multiple layers. Of interviews, but also multiple layers of individuals that's involved in the process. So. I understand the best practice. I agree with your best practice. No one has ever directed me here or at any time.
Another important part of the hiring of staff. And sometimes hiring of staff could include promotion of staff from within. And it involves a very important partner and that's the associations. Okay, you have. The Teachers Association and you have the Classified Association. And I don't recall if you have other associations in your district. Do you have more than two? You have five? Okay, that's a good number. That's a big number. I had two and I thought it was a good. Five and the associations play a key role in 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 this in that they. Have an obligation to represent. The employees that they that that they that they serve there within the district. Let's just take one, for example, the. The Classified Association. They want the hiring process, the promotion process to be fair. And they're going to be watching and they should be watching. That's part of their role and responsibility. They want to make sure that the person that is hired is. The most qualified, the one with the most experience, the one that's going to do the best. And and they also are very interested in supporting their membership. In growing and the opportunity for their membership to have opportunities to go up within the system. So I'm going to dig a little bit into the role of the associations in a minute. But whether it's classified employees, administrator employees, teachers. Association, whatever associations you have. They are a key part and could and often are a part of the panel. Very often, number one, and number two, they're going to be. Watching. To make sure that it's fair and everything, so. Any any questions about the association's role with regard to the interview or the selection of staff or the process at all? Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I have a question about promotions.
Okay.
So. Assume that there are. Individuals in the organization. That the board thinks very highly of. And would like to see opportunities for advancement for those people. And these are internal people. Is that if the board starts having those conversations? You know, X is a good worker, you know, yada, 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 yada. We would like to see them advance in the organization. Is that out of bounds in the what and the how or can you please?
I I think I think that's out of bounds. I think with with the board's role, if there if there is a position, for example. Let's just say there's a a principal or a district level position. Or a particular position, the board role could be in line with our mission. In line with our goals. Please remember, Dr. Hurst, that we're looking for diversity. Remember that we're looking, that one of our goals is to hire staff. That represents the students and the communities that we serve. In in a principal position, you what, Dr. Hurst, in in your recruitment and selection of this. Principal for this particular school. Please, please keep in mind that one of our goals is to increase student achievement. That school has not been achieving very well. Their scores are going down as you go through the process. Please make it a priority with the panel and with yourself. To look for someone that has a proven track record of increasing. Student achievement. In this particular school and this particular position, Dr. Hurst, just just as a reminder. The community speaks, the majority of the community speaks this particular language. If you have some candidates, as you go through the recruitment process. If they are bilingual or can speak this particular language. That serves a great portion of the community, please keep that in mind. So qualities, characteristics, experience. The the what what you'd like to see in that in that position, yes, but to. Get into the weeds of say this particular person is doing an outstanding job. That's a perspective that. Board members may have not knowing the internal workings of the organizations. They may not be familiar with other issues that are happening with that employee behind the scenes. And to a degree, when you as a board member get involved with. Talking about a particular person and promotion, you're getting into the how. And that's the superintendent's role to select the staff. That best meets whatever the conditions of that department are and and again, it goes back to the practices. And and the 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 protocols that you have in place for the panels for the application plus. To make it fair. Jim, had anything?
I I think that. A process that I used in the past, which helps to deal with this. Because this whole personnel area is one of the ones that gets a little problematic over time, but. It was always helpful for me to know. I I always, you know, from my perspective, the superintendent's job was to handle promotions. Evaluate personnel and that, but there were occasions when it was helpful to me to get feedback from the board. About, so I might have, you know, once a year, maybe a meeting where I kind of went over personnel. Issues in the district with the board and said, here's. with the board and said, here's how I'm dealing with this. Here's what I'm seeing. Is there any feedback that you could give me that would help me to make the right decision? Being clear about that it was my decision. But on certain areas, you know, it was helpful for me to get some feedback from the board. They knew my role was to make the decision about the promotion, about the hiring. But sometimes the, there were occasions when the board members had some good feedback. So I always tried to approach it from that perspective. Is there, you know, kind of giving, here's my assessment of where we are and not everybody in the district, but the big personnel issues. And if they've had any feedback that would help me, you know, this is where I'm kind of leaning. Do you have any insights, anything that might help me? Do I always found that that was a helpful process? And Chris, I don't know how you felt about this, but is there a process you use to, you know, keep that balance between your responsibility to do hiring and promotion, but getting the feedback you needed to have?
Before we go to, to Dr. Hurst, do you need to go ahead and comment if that's okay?
Okay.
Well, mine was more of a question. So maybe Dr. Hurst, you can put it within that. Because thinking kind of in the same terms, maybe not of like, hey, I think this person would be great to get a promotion or to go up in the organization like when we're meeting one-on-one or whatever, like if we can give feedback like Jim's saying around, hey, like this, I saw this person do this and I thought this person did a great job, right? Or this, we saw, I saw this and it wasn't handled well, like, would that be inappropriate? Or is that just part of giving feedback to Dr. Hurst on something maybe he wasn't present for? Because I've definitely, I've done it with Mr. Duffy, like, hey, I saw this person did a really good job at this presentation I was in, and I just wanted you to know, right? And I feel like that could probably be positive feedback, but maybe Dr. Hurst, you can give me thoughts on that, too.
Absolutely. I will share with you, Mr. Garza, that I agree exactly with what you said. That oftentimes there are things that are happening with individuals within the district. And sometimes if you're not always working with that individual, if you don't know the inner workings, then you'll see maybe at the surface level. But what I will say is I always appreciate feedback and just like Mr. Brown said, I actually have a regular practice of sitting down with a board and sharing with them in close session in Washington and sharing with them an overview of here's where we are with our, our leaders, just to kind of give them an update. And then I will say as well, I've received feedback from board members, but it's always been very clear that when it deals with the operations of the district, such as promotion or advancement, then that has been the superintendent's fault. But you always have to make sure that you're open to feedback you receive. I mean, you have to receive feedback from, from anyone. That's just the nature of the job. Then exactly, but then it's very important that we're having like the conversation about operations versus policy. And then the superintendent makes that recommendation to the board for advancement and promotion.
Other comments or questions on that? I think we have some clarity there. Okay, I, I began to touch on the, the associations and there's down a couple of slides, we're going to get into calls from the associations and unless you want to get into the roles and responsibilities right now with regard to the unions or I don't know what you call them, they're unions or associations. The role of the super board in with the unions and associations and the role of the superintendent. Do we want to?
Do your thing, man. Do your thing.
All right. Okay, so the, the, the board's role with regard to associations is no different than parents, staff, community members, listen, that's it. Just listen and then redirect. The unions and associations play a critical role in the history and development of this country and within our educational system. They negotiate, they bargain, the contracts, they, they have labor issues that, that come up and they have concerns. And then when negotiations get tough, they have a role to play and, and they play their role in, in representing the constituency, serve and try to improve salaries, benefits and working conditions and labor issues there. Those are the three biggest responsibilities. Obviously, they get into lobbying and other things, but we won't get into that. And so far as your particular district is concerned, that's the area that they're going to be involved with most. And that's where the board may get emails, phone calls or requests for a meeting or request to attend one of their events. And as, as a board member, your role is real simple and real clear. Listen, redirect and inform the superintendent. I got a call from this particular association, they're concerned about a labor issue, blank, blank, blank. I told them to contact the H R person, which is usually one of the people that's involved with negotiations or labor issues. Or I direct, I redirected them to you. So it's just listen and redirect, not to try to solve the problem, not to try to become involved in it. That's the role of the, of the board. The role of the superintendent is to, to maintain strong working relationships with the associations to establish a good communication system, to problem solve, to preview what's happening within the district and to gather input. And then I'll give you a very specific example of I, I mentioned at the beginning that part of it was sharing some of the practices that, that, that I had. We only had 24 schools. We're, we're not as big as you. But the process works and, and, and it's a good, it's a good best practice. It's used by quite a few superintendents. We, we had meetings monthly with the chief, the H R person and myself with the association president and their chief negotiator. And on those discussions, we generally accomplish three different things. One was if there was a labor issue at a particular site, it was discussed and information was shared. Sometimes the problem was resolved and there was resolution right then and there. Sometimes it was determined that we would look into it and either email, phone or wait till the next meeting. So there was, there were discussions about labor issues and some form of resolution to them. There was also occasions where there were large initiatives that were going to be taking place in the district. An example may, may have been, maybe when we were beginning to implement the common core standards or when we were going to go through a textbook adoption process, we would bring in the C and I person to that meeting, the curriculum and instruction person and begin to share, okay, this is the process we're going to be using. Give us input. We plan to do this and share this information with, through our principals and then bring a selective group of people, whatever process we were going to use was shared with the associations. And then it was determined, you know, get input and then we began the implementation. So, so there was a process for issues to come forward, communication issues, labor issues, and it was discussed at those meetings and there was follow-up and there was on occasions the association, whatever, whichever one it was and the superintendent, the association president, the superintendent would put out a letter to all staff regarding this issue. We have come to this resolution or this is what we'll be doing for this particular initiative. If you have any questions or concerns, blah, blah, blah. Doc, Dr. Hurst, what has been your experience in, in working with associations, unions?
I, I think the practice that you just shared, I also had a regular meeting. It was actually more frequent than what you were saying. You said a monthly. We actually would meet every week with the union president and the vice president. And we would talk about issues that's happening throughout the learning community, but specifically what was happening with our teachers. Not as frequent with our classified union. It was more like you were saying, once per month, but again, it was dealing with issues around employees. What we tried to do was try to stay ahead of things. So my union president on both sides, classified and certificated, they knew that if there was something going to call me and we could sit down and have a conversation and address it together.
Okay, President Phillips, you had a comment or a question?
I have a question. In these monthly meetings, and this is for, I guess, Mr. Garza and Dr. Hurst, it could be both, but these monthly meetings where you're meeting with your team is meeting with the unions and problem solving, talking about big issues or whatnot. Do board members attend those meetings?
No.
Why not?
Well, those are, those are issues. Let's say that there's a labor issue. That's getting into the how things are getting fixed or whatever the problem is. There's, that's the role of the superintendent. And if the problems at a particular school site or within a department, there's procedures and practices and protocols in place to begin to address those problems. Your role as a, as a board member with regard to unions, associations is to listen, carefully share the information with, with the superintendent and redirect back to the, if it's an issue with budget, redirect them to, you know, the, the, the business person, if it's an issue with H R, redirect them back to the H R person and let the superintendent know, or redirect them back to the superintendent. It's, it's the superintendent's role and the role of key cabinet members to deal with the different unions and associations and the labor issues because there's contracts that have to be followed and adhered to. There's ed codes that have to be followed and adhered to. And there's typically policy within the district that sometimes associations bring forward or the superintendent brings forward, well, this is our board policy on it. And so they're the ones that are responsible for dealing with labor issues and negotiations. Jim, you want to add anything?
Well, my, my thought is that this is gets to be a little bit complicated area. I'm well aware of that. But fundamentally, the board's role is one of its critical roles is oversight. Are we operating the right way? Are the right resources in place? Do we have a right mission? And time being finite, where does the board spend its ti- its time? Where does it focus its work? The job of the superintendent is to run the district. There's a lot of meetings associated with that and all that. The job of the board is to provide the oversight to make sure the right leadership is in place, the resources are there, that we're making progress to take policy to suggest corrective action. And the more the board gets involved in the day-to-day operation of the district, time being finite, you, if you choose to do this.
You went to me, Jim.
Where does the board want to spend its major time and energy? Chris, I don't know what your thoughts on, on, on that, but but that oversight function to be done well is really, you know, it's a busy, busy job and there's a lot to pay attention to and do. And the more you get down in the daily meetings of the district and the operational district, it's not, you can't come by once in a while. I, you know, we, yeah, it's not like anybody has anything to hide. They're there, but it's where you want to focus your time and energy.
Yeah, I'll be very honest with you, with all of you that I, I mean, I've actually engaged in these conversations when I first came on board. And I think we, we probably all know who, what we're talking about. I won't, I won't say like the meeting format, but I've had conversations with labor unions about this topic because I know fundamentally, the superintendent's role is to receive the direction from the board and guidance around, here's your goals. Here's what we want you to do, superintendent. We're hiring you to move our district in this direction. And then it's my job, it's the district's job to move in that direction. So there's a clear distinction for me and I really get it when the superintendent's role is the means or the how, and then the board's role is policy. So when we talk about having a meeting with labor union and we have board members there, I personally clear, clearly see that as board members overstepping their bounds. And I've had that conversation with individuals since I've been here. And what I've shared with them, I've had this honest conversation with labor union leaders that here's the work that we're trying to do with the board is really understanding that distinction between policy versus operations. And I was very clear when I shared with them as well that whenever we have this forum, in my opinion, it blurs the lines because then they're involving or inserting themselves into operational conversations. Now, with that being said, I'm not sure what the past practice was or the history that led to this happening, or if it's always been that way. But it feels like when I'm in the meeting that I've been in, that it's operational, it's operational conversations.
Trustee Smith Bowles?
So I have a kind of follow-up question. So would committees be operational or would committees be more of the what? So we have five different committees that are headed by board members. Is that an operational type of thing? So for example, I'm head of the academic committee, right? And in the academic committee, we talk about topics, take deep dives into them, have conversations. Are we going into the operational part? Or are we staying into the what part? And how do we know the distinction and how do we keep it standardized for all committees?
So I, go ahead, Juan.
No, go ahead, Jim. I'll follow you.
This is a, this is a difficult area and but I'm, I might offer a couple of thoughts on this. In, when the board, if the board establishes committees, which is different than the superintendent establishing committees. So that's, that's a big difference right there. If it is a board committee, it's brown acted. If it's a superintendent committee, it isn't. So I just want to make that one distinction. That's an important distinction because if it's a board established committee. The second thing is if it's a board established committee and a board member chairs the committee. Now, it, this is by judgment. It gives that particular board member a leverage that the other four board members don't have in influencing the outcome of the committee. I, I, I would personally prefer what I would call a liaison role to the committee, if it's a board committee, or even if it's a superintendent committee, it's fine to have a board liaison to the committee. But if you're going to establish a committee at the board level, particularly in my judgment, it should be chaired by, it should be a little bit more independent. The board member can be a liaison as a resource to the committee, providing information. But I think you want to try to avoid the idea that a particular board member has an undue influence on the outcome of the process of that committee over, over four other board members. Now, I know that may sound a little fuzzy, but it's a distinction that I think is important between chairing liaison between board committee and superintendent committee.
President Phillips, you had a comment? President Phillips, you had a comment?
So we're peeling back the layers of the onion. So we have, we have board committees, we have staff committees, we also have. Parent committees. That are led by parents. Now, we have. Some of these parent committees have liaisons. In that situation, what? Is the best practice for the role of the liaison? So for example, what should they be doing? What should they not be doing? Should they have any authority over the parent committee? And what I'm talking about specifically is a board member acting as a liaison.
I think.
Context.
The board member's role as a liaison is to be a resource to the committee. And to convey information from the board to the committee. To say, you know, if you have this question, then maybe I can help get an answer. To it, but it's not to direct. The action of the committee. The committee should have a little bit greater degree of independence. And as I say, if, if one board member. Has an influence on the outcome of the committee over four other board members. Then that board member, when the committee's recommendations come to the board. Has a vested interest in, 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 in representing the interest of the committee. That's, that's a little bit different nuance to it. So for parent committees, liaison role is a resource role. And, or an observer role. I'm observing the action of the committee. I'll share what I see with my colleagues on the board. But not to be directive to the committee about what they should be doing, other than to convey if there's a charge given to the committee by the board. The, the, the board member could, you know, remind people what the charge of the committee is.
But basically, just to summarize. Basically, the board member can share information. Or if they need help getting a question answered, help them get a question answered. But they should not be exercising any authority or direction over the parent committee.
That, that's our judgment. You know, I think I, you know, Juan and I would agree on that. Again, it gets them an unfair advantage over the other four board members who aren't there. It's more a neutral role. With, with this kind of thing. And, you know, then now you're talking about parent committees. So I, and I'm aware that there are also.
Talking about parent committee, I'm talking about, I'm specifically talking about parent committees right now.
Right, right.
Trustee Christian, and then I'll, and then I'd like to respond also.
Yes, I, I was just. Just going to ask a question, okay. I, I know we talked about committees, so, and I know trustee Smith Folds mentioned, you know, she, she chairs the academic committee. And I chair the safety committee. So we all have in different committees, you know, with the board. And the question is, are we doing the things the right way or I, I mean, you know, because you open things up, so I'm trying to figure this thing out. You know, I need some clarity. Because I, I chair the safety committee. Trust, trustee Smith Folds chaired the academic and, and so forth, and everybody else chaired a different committee, so. Need some clarification.
He's Smith Folds.
So that's my question also. Like, I just want to know, should board members be chairing committees? We have academic facilities, budget, charter. And safety and climate. Should board members be chairing those committees? They are Brown Act committees, but should board members be chairing those committees in your opinion?
I'm going to give you my opinion. Okay, and it follows in line with what Mr. Brown was saying about undue influence. One, and then second, having a greater degree of influence than the other board members. I do not believe it's a good practice for board members to chair, chair committees. Believe it's a good practice for board members to. Attend some committee meetings to share information. From the board to the committee. Or from the committee to the board. The board member going and saying, I sat in. And observed the safety committee meeting. And they were discussing A, B, C, D. And I believe they're going to come up with a recommendation for us to consider in, within the next four to six weeks. So it's being, sharing information back and forth. That's what I believe is a good practice. I think I mentioned. Board members have the highway patrol and the mirror effect on, on people. Especially staff and parents. If a board member is chairing that. Particular committee, most people will believe or be of the belief that, you know. It's going to be whatever the board member wants it to be in the end. So there's a perception that's involved with that. And, and all of that has to do with position and influence. So my recommendation is, no. And I'm being very direct and honest with you. In our, in our district over the fifteen years, we would. Establish task forces or establish committees to deal with student dress code as an example, or. Policies and procedures for student discipline or certain things that, that needed to be addressed. And. Quite often, board members didn't attend those because of those reasons that, you know, when they attended, people would look to them when they were discussing and sometimes feel uncomfortable. Whether it be a staff member or a parent. Might feel uncomfortable making a comment because of the presence of board members. When they thought this was a parent committee or a staff committee to make recommendations to the board. So that's, that's my opinion.
I would share that and I would add that I don't think it's very empowering to committees. I think you create committees to get their advice, get their research, get their best feeling and. I think you have to give them a certain, you have to give them a charge. Giving a committee a clear charge is very important. So they don't wander off, but then empowering them to do their work and then being there as a resource to help them.
President Phillips?
I just want to clarify something because I think there might be a little. A few wires getting crossed. So the committees that the board members chair. Are committees of the board in the sense that there are only board members on them. So there is no committee that a board member is chairing that is made up, for example, of community members and staff or whatnot. So like, oh, three Christians. The, the only other person on it is a board member.
That wasn't clear, so thank you.
That was not clear at all.
So does that change it now? Does that change the dynamic and the answer a little bit when it's just? The, the word committee you thought meant more people? Is that what, is that where we were going with that? But now if it's just two board members. Charing or two board members on a committee. Does that change your answer? Are we okay to have committees?
What, what's the charge to the committee?
All of the committees have different things. So like, for example, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy is the chair of the charter committee. They are reviewing right now. Our board policy or charter policy. And they're doing it in conjunction with staff. And they're going to make a recommendation to the full board or. Mrs. Smith Folds, she chairs the academic committee. So for example, the board has to approve. The single plans for student achievement. So that academic subcommittee. Review those plans and made a recommendation to the board. And so like, you could go, so basically kind of the things. In a nutshell, things that the board has to vote on that may take a long time. They will review those things and make a recommendation before it comes to the board.
Okay, I, I think that's a, a good process. How is the superintendent involved with the work of those committees?
So in our bylaw, the superintendent theoretically staffs all of the committees. But what we've been doing is that there's been a cabinet member that's been assigned to each committee. But that's just what we've been doing. That doesn't mean that's what we have to continue to do.
Okay, but there is, the, the, the board committee is not operating by itself. It has. A resource from the superintendent's office that works with that.
Yes, it does. And then the board committees also don't decide any of the policies. They just make recommendations to the full board and then we vote on them.
So they, they do the research, they look at past, past practice, they look at the situation. Okay, I think it changes everything. I thought I, I was of the impression. That the academic committee involved some staff and principals and. Some recommendations were made in from, from a different groups or parents. So that changes it for me.
But, but Mr. Garza, let me be clear that if we're talking about a topic in the academic committee, we'll bring people in that would give us those points of view. Is, does that make sense? Like, we'll bring people in to talk to us. It's like, if we're doing, staff will come in. So if we have a topic about. Special Ed's plan for student achievement. That's, the special ed staff will come in and they may have a teacher come in or we may have something. Another person come in and we all have conversations. But we're not setting any policy, but we are having conversations. My original question was, how do we make sure that we're staying in the what? And not the how when we're having these committee conversations?
So then let me ask you. With the example that you gave this, of the, this single student, the, the plan, right?
Right.
Or the safety plan? And you're going to bring people in. Why are the rest of the board members not listening to that information? Why is that topic which is important? Not a special study session where you gather that information and they're, and all the board members process it?
Oh, all the board theoretically, I mean, it's a brown, it's a meeting, right? So all the board members can actually listen to the meeting because right now they're all on Zoom. But the idea is that. We've, so according to trustee Smith Folds. And I think this is true, but I haven't been counting. We have had a year's worth of meetings in the last five months, maybe over a year's worth of meetings.
Over a year, we're at number, this makes twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Okay.
Almost at thirty, and that's not counting our individual meetings that we've had in our committees, not counting that.
Okay, so we've had approximately thirty board meetings. And it's, we just hit June first. And so one of the things, because our district is a little larger. Than some other, of the other districts is, like, I'll give you an example with the student plan for, with the student, plans for student achievement. The board really wasn't reviewing those. It really wasn't being done at all. And so. The idea also is to be able to have the board be able to get its work done. By actually having some of the things that take longer. At least being worked up in a committee, because frankly, we were not getting our work done.
And is that because the board has changed in the last. Since the elections in November?
Of not getting the work done?
Of trying, of, of having all these meetings to play catch up?
We are playing a lot of catch up. We've been playing catch up for six months, to be frank. And I thank the board for being willing to do that.
That, it, it just sounds to me like there are an awful lot of meetings. And meetings are time, or time is a resource like everything else. And is the amount of meetings. You know. I mean, is anybody really aware of the amount of meetings that exist? And the time, I'm not saying it, it, it's wrong. I'm just saying that, you know, we have, time is a resource. It's, it's finite. And there's a lot of staff time involved with this. There's a lot of board time involved with this. You can't do everything. What isn't getting done because of this? And. It just seems like a lot, it just seems to me like a lot of meetings. And I'm not sure that's the most efficient way to operate. Now, I'm, I'm not trying to be critical on this. It's just a concern that I have. Because I know the, if you want, if you're going to have a meeting, people want to do the right preparation for it. You don't want to walk into a meeting on, on student achievement or academics and not have the right data available and all that. And so you, you prepare it and you do that. Then there's another meeting with this and another meeting with that. The amount of meeting time in this district. I'll just say it, seems excessive to me. And I, I wish there were a way that somebody, I don't know who has a handle on all that. But it does seem that to me that that's a serious. That's a challenge that, is there a better way, more efficient way to operate with people's use, use of people's times? That's an outside point of view. I don't know.
Dr. Hersch.
I, I think this is a very important conversation. That needs to be had and I, I know I initiated the conversation with President Phillips, I think this afternoon. And also trustee Smith Folds. I, I, as I think about the, the work of the district and as the board is, is going to be developing goals. And expectations for the superintendent. It's really important that we all understand, you know, the work. The work of the district is really going to be based around those goals. And what I want everyone to understand is that there has to be adequate and ample time to do the work. So I've been here for two weeks now. And just listening and learning from everyone. And what you're saying and what President Phillips has said and trustee Smith Folds is saying as well. It's all true. We, we are having too many meetings. We need to get control of that. Because when it comes down to it and the board really clarifies the goals for us, there needs to be time to do it. What I do know, being here for two weeks, is there is not time to do the work because a lot of. What's happening that I see is preparing for meetings. So it's almost as if we have a committee meeting or we have a board meeting. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that happens in prepping for the meetings. We prep for the meetings, go to the meetings. By the time people are finished with the meetings, they're really exhausted and it's hard for them to really engage in the work of teaching and learning and providing feedback. So I understand the board policy and I reviewed the board policy that the board has the right to, you know, establish a committee. But one of the things we need our board for all of us to think about is. Is it excessive? Is some of this work also work that we're doing internally? That can be reported out a different way? So we just need to think about the meetings and how to do it a different way. My perspective is, certainly the board can establish that committee, but I also see that there's some committees. That's doing work that also should be done by district staff. And that work can be reported out in a regular board meeting. It doesn't have to be another scheduled meeting. Or some kind of other form we're reporting out to board. And I won't use any examples. I'll just leave it at that.
Matia?
Thank you. So I've been thinking about this a lot and I decided to go back and. Look at agendas of districts that look like ours, just to see what they put on agendas and like, for example, I looked at Mount Diablo. Unified's agenda for the last board meeting. They actually had like three times the amount of agenda items that we did. And I was really shocked because I was actually expecting a lot less than us. But they had like twenty items on consent, they had fifteen items on action, they had fourteen items on, on, on. Oh, excuse me, I'm forgetting the word on. When we have conversation about the item. And I was shocked because I was like, wow, we like. Go through to eleven, right? Like tomorrow, we have a special board meeting because we had so many items last time. Is it because, I was wondering if you could give us like maybe your thoughts on what, what is maybe occurring? We all have a lot to say. I am definitely a long winner, always have questions. Is it because maybe us as board members are not as prepared for a board meeting? Not, not me individually prepared because I, I definitely prepare for the board meetings, but more of like. We don't have the information that we need to be successful for the board meeting where we don't have to ask the questions? Or is it just purely because maybe? We just have to ask less questions? Like, what, what is it that's, that's kind of? Creating this, this atmosphere because I, I, I was really shocked that like. Oakland, them, like, they had so many items and they got done by like, well, not Oakland, they're a bad example because they're always done at one in the morning, but like. Mount Diablo was done by like ten-thirty that night with three times the amount of items. But like, I don't believe the board members were not asking questions because they didn't care. They just seemed to be in the know. Like, is that maybe the reason why? Because we, I feel like I usually don't know about an item and I have to ask. Maybe I'm answering my own question, but I just wonder your thoughts on. Maybe I'm answering my own question, but I just wonder your thoughts on all this.
Well, in order for for us to be able to answer your question, we'd have to observe few meetings, you know, in in terms of of it. I think slide down, a couple of slides down, we're gonna talk about board protocols a little bit. Get into, you know, some of the practices that may help to, uh, have board meetings run more efficiently. And so we'll be digging a little bit into that. Board member Smith Folds and then Dr. Hurst.
So, okay, so you guys haven't watched one of our board meetings before?
Well, not not with, we've watched some board meetings.
Okay.
But really looking at the dynamics of questions asked and
Okay.
agenda items, so.
All right, I was about to say you've missed a tree. So this is, um, so for me, what I think it helps me process and I I I still wanna, I'm still not clear about committees and I'm trying to get clear about that. But what helps me process is good communication, right? And then establishing trust. So I don't, I love the academic committee. I absolutely love it. It's dear to my heart. But I also realize if that's outside of my lane, then I need to be told that that's outside of my lane. Do you understand what I mean? Like, if that's the work of the district, then I need to let it be the work of the district. But let me be clear, I do love the academic committee. I love the conversations we have. I love all of that. But if I'm supposed to be doing something else, I need to do the work that I was elected to do. Does that make sense? So I just want you to really help clear that up for me. Because I want to make sure that I'm putting in my one hundred percent where I was elected to put my one hundred percent in. Does that, I I just want to be real clear with what you guys' opinion is of that. And with the caveat that I don't want to let go of the academic committee. I absolutely adore being on the safety committee. I love all of that. Those are some of the best meetings that I have. But if I'm supposed to be doing something else, I need to make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing and what I was elected as a trustee to do. And what I don't want to do is erode any trust that the public may have in our superintendent and or our staff to do the work that they're supposed to do. Like, I don't want to be a barrier to that at all. Does that, am I clear with that? So I just need you to help me with the clarity around what you're really saying when it comes to board members having committee, when it's just two of us, no matter, but having committee-led conversations. And are we taking away from what we're supposed to doing something else? And are we negatively impacting the superintendent and his staff?
Before Dr. Hurst answers, let me, let me ask you a quick question. Are these committees committees that function year round? Or is this a committee that's formed and it's gonna address the topic and they're gonna have two meetings and they're done?
We've had a meeting, academic, we've had a meeting, uh, once a month and probably twice on Sunday sometimes. So we've had meetings and then we've had special meetings inside of the meetings. So we've had, I think we're on meeting number seven since January. And we have another one on June seventh. And then we're gonna talk about having one in the summer, but what you about to tell me can alter that. So I'm just, I'm trying to get clear about what it is. But we've had a lot of meetings and they've been great meetings. We've had great discussions. There's great topics that we've been able to dive deep in. But what I, again, what I'm trying to figure out is if I'm putting my feet in other people's pool, you need to let me know. Cause I want to be able to stay in my own lane and do the job that I was elected to do and do it my hundred percent.
Dr. Hurst, do you want to answer that or do you want me to respond? What's your preference?
I don't think I can answer that question. I was gonna actually share another point. But I was, I will say this, um, absolutely one hundred percent, uh, again, being here for two weeks. Um, just the data and the conversations that I'm having, I know based on that data, that it is impacting the organization's ability to really influence, positively influence teaching and learning. And I'm talking about the number of meetings. Um, so there is a a direct correlation between the number of meetings and the ability to really support teaching and learning like we should.
So I I would, I I would like to see on a page, I think this is where we could maybe be helpful. A list of the, all the committees in the district right now, okay? And I'm talking about two types of committee. The one mentioned, the ad hoc committees that are created for a specific purpose. They, they do their job and they're done. Or standing committees. Standing committees are permanent. They meet on a regular basis. Standing committees don't have to meet weekly. They don't have to be monthly. They could meet quarterly. I mean, there's, there's different ways to organize this. So it it, to me, the board meeting itself is the critical point where all the work comes together. And that's what the public sees. It's where the work of the district is conducted. It's where we help the community. So the better we get our board meetings and how these other thing, other committees and tasks support the the board meeting itself seems to me to be very critical. I think there's a way, all this is good intention work and it's important work. But I do believe there's a different way to do it. In the amount of time, it doesn't have to be weekly or monthly. It involves how do we create an agenda for a meeting that we, that is time efficient and people efficient and all that. And this, this is a big project right now, but in order to get our collective arms around this, this is something we need to take on so that we can manage the work better, both for the board, for the superintendent, for the district as a whole and the community.
And to the staff that has
Yeah.
here, the information, respond, do the research, because it's taking their time also. So, uh, no off the cuff, you know, uh, you're wrong or you should stop. I think what what I'd like to recommend is that as the tr- as the strategic plan is developed for the district, that be part of the discussion in terms of, you know, do we want to continue with some of the committees that we have? And really define the purpose of the committees, the role of the committees, and whether they're gonna be standing committees or they'll be given a particular task to tackle and then bring back a recommendation. So all of those, all of those are think, uh, good, worthy discussions to have at this point with new board members that have come on board and especially with the new superintendent. Uh, Mr. Phillips and then Dimitri, I'm I'm not sure about the order who raised your hand first. I was concentrating on on what I was saying, so I apologize. Who was first there?
Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, um. So we're talking about the number of meetings and how the number of meetings impacts the work. Whether it's the number of board meetings, the committee meetings, and God knows the other meetings that float around there. Can you talk very briefly about how the length of the board meetings affect the work also? So like, if we're consistently getting out after eleven or twelve or later, right? Like, how does that affect the ability to do the work? How does that affect staff? Um, morale or them having to wake up the next morning and commute from wherever, I mean, we're in the Zoom now, but commute from wherever they would normally commute from. I'm driving from, you know, wherever, through traffic to get to my school to teach, um, or whatever. Can you just talk a little bit about how the length of board meetings impacts the work of teaching and learning?
Absolutely. And and just one example you mentioned earlier, uh, and we're we're gonna dig into that a little more with a slide down the a couple of slides down in terms of board meeting protocols. But I I believe you mentioned earlier that you're gonna have public comment after this presentation. Why is my question? Your public comment is before the topic, so that you can listen to the public. And then you have your deliberations and make a decision and then you move forward. You know, you don't, I, this is the first board that I've heard that has public comment after the topic.
To answer your question, the the rules, uh, procedure are the parliamentary rules that this board actually follows, uh, is, are it's Rosenberg's rules. Um, and so the setup for Rosenberg's rules in a normal board meeting, uh, would be a presentation, uh, from staff, right? And then it will be clarifying questions that the board asks. And then after the board asks those clarifying questions, then it's public comment. Then after it's public comment, then the board deliberates, um, and makes the decision. So public comment does always come before we actually deliberate. Uh, but that's the, not after, it's never after. Yeah, and so at the beginning of the meeting, when you saw me going, uh, that was what I was trying to figure out in my mind. But that is the normal for us. It's, again, it's, it's presentation, which I guess you're doing now. But it's presentation, clarifying questions, then it's public comment, then it's board deliberation. So it comes in the middle.
On action items, right? You're not taking action on anything, though.
Even in discussion items, it's it's just, it's always the, it's the same. It's the same. That's the, that's the format, so.
I just want, I want to add to this a little bit about, you need to, and more directed to your question, uh, trustee Phillips. The impact of the long meetings or multiple meetings, you know, uh, pro- productivity from my perspective. How much we're able to do in our work product, the quantity and the quality of it is dependent on four variables. Uh, the intellectual part, the physical part, my own physical well-being, my emotional well-being and my spiritual well-being. Those are four forces in life that interact that affect your productivity. Being a workaholic does not necessarily create higher productivity in the workforce. The longer I work, the more productive I am. That is simply not true. The, my productivity depends, at least my perspective, on those four variables. If I'm in a meeting from four o'clock in the afternoon to two o'clock in the morning, I can almost guarantee you the next day, I'm not going to be as productive as I might have been if the meeting were a little bit shorter and I had at least six hours of sleep that night or I was able to go take a walk or I just had some meditation time or whatever. So I think if, you know, so so much we create product, we equate productivity with quantity of work time. And it isn't that. It's a much better balance of those four things. And these long meetings, both the length of the meeting and the quantity of the meetings does not equal higher productivity. There is a more efficient way to operate, and I'm not saying efficiency is always the goal. It isn't. Because there's important work to be done. But how we organize ourselves, how we conduct ourselves, what the agenda is, all these kinds of things are interplay. And, you know, we have a responsibility of the, at the board level, a superintendent, to take care of our, to take care of our community, to take care of our staff and make sure they're productive. And provide some, you know, and whatever the resources are to do that. But I can tell you, uh, that, uh, multiple meetings, long meetings do not equal higher productivity.
And you mentioned, Jim, that the next day you might not be best in terms of of work. I would say that probably by about nine thirty, ten o'clock, you're not at your best either.
No, I agree.
Most of you have been working all day long to begin with. And in between, try to squeeze in whatever your own personal and family responsibilities are between the end of your workday and the beginning of a board meeting. And then by about nine thirty or so, you're both physically, mentally, intellectually and emotionally tired. I mean, you've gotta be. How, how effective can you be, uh, with the discussion and the decision-making? Uh, gets into the 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 length of the meeting and the the stamina that that you have. You've been doing it. And I'm not gonna question that you've been giving it your best effort and doing your best. But this is something definitely that that does affect the the district as a whole, so. Board member Smith Folds and then Dimitri.
Um, Dimitri, were you first? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it's totally fine. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Okay, so here's the question that I have. When you were talking about, Mr. Brown, you just talked about physical, spiritual, mental, emotional. Do you, and taking care of the community, Mr. Guards, I heard you say that. Do you think that it's more productive for us to put, and trustee Phillips just told you the way that we lay out our, um, the the way we lay out our agenda as it pertains to public comment. Do you think that it's better to have public comment first, then the presentation and then the question and discussion? Or keep it the way that we have it now? Because our presentations are long. The presentations are long and people are waiting until a long time to then have the public comment. And then the, we ask the questions and then the public comment and then the discussion. Do you think that we're doing better for the physical, spiritual, mental and emotional well-being of our community to have the public comment come first? When we're talking about discussion items or action items, do you think we would do better that way? Or do you have an opinion on that?
I have an Go ahead.
Yeah, I think both, what, both, uh, Juan and I have opinions. We never lack for opinions. Go, go, go ahead, Juan.
But you have public comment so that both the the presenters and the board can hear the public, right? And quite often, it's beneficial, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna emphasize the word beneficial for the presenters to hear the comments of the public. It may be staff, it may be union, it may be parent, it may be somebody else. So that the goal would be to try to address whatever that public comment was as part of the presentation. Okay? Because quite often, if you have the presentation first, the public comment may center around a disagreement or a concern that they had with the presentation after they heard it. And staff doesn't have the opportunity to respond to it and that in advance. They may be able to address it during their presentation if they hear it in one way or the other. So I think it's more fair if it's in advance. And that way you hear the public comment in advance also and consider it as staff makes presentations to see if it is or isn't addressed. You may decide to have a follow-up question or discussion in your deliberations. So my opinion for those reasons is have the public comment first. Presentation, question and deliberation by the board. That's your role and responsibility after that. Having heard public, having heard presentation.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Thank you.
Jim?
And I, I have a, maybe a little bit different. I I I don't disagree with what what Juan is saying at all. If I had a preference, uh, I would have public comment at the beginning of the meeting on both agenda and non-agenda items. And, uh, and then take the comments at that time and then move forward. I would occasionally provide, I'm gonna use the term, a town hall meeting, some kind of format, which is more listening on the part of the board or a couple of board members. A town hall format where it's a little more open and exchange. But the board has a fiduciary responsibility to carry out its business, provide the oversight and all that. And listening to the community is important, but also your oversight responsibilities are important. If it, my preference would be, and everybody, you know, people do this differently, so you have to do what works best for you. I would do the public comment at the beginning and if necessary, you could have something at the end of the meeting. But I think the one shot, if you have it before every item, that I I will guarantee you that will expand, extend the meeting almost infinitely. And which it's, which it does for you.
I agree. Dimitri?
Thank you. Um, I mean, I I really love both of your ideas. Um, I think, Jim, your idea makes makes sense. Um, maybe it's something we can try since not everybody in the public is is happy about how we currently do public comment. Um, even though we're, we're trying to be efficient, but I guess it's on what we know. So I like maybe trying something different uh, and putting public comment first. Um, but I was gonna comment on actually what Dr. Hurst said about too many meetings and the feedback he's getting from his staff, uh, which is one of my concerns. Uh, I feel tired, uh, uh, because I work all day and then I come to these meetings a couple of times a week sometimes. Uh, so I can only imagine how staff feels with the pressure that they get from the board and then presentation. So I think it's important that So I think it's important that we listen to that feedback. Dr. Hurst has been here for two weeks, and if he's getting that feedback already, I think that it is important that we pivot and listen to that. Um, I think the six months we have had some very difficult decisions and important decisions. The most important decisions I think that we're going to make together have, in some ways, already been made. And, and a couple of that we're still going to make this summer, but, um, I think there's probably a reason why we're doing what we're doing, which made sense to me at the time. Um, but I think that moving forward, um, the last thing I want to do is continue to burn out our staff. Because I do think that people are, are watching and coming in and listening. And I worry about people who are doing the work and on top of that are having long nights at their schools. Um, on top of coming to listen to us, so, um. I would hope that maybe, not tonight, but in the next couple of weeks. Maybe Dr. Hurst, you could give us some, not expectations, but some thoughts around this. Um, to every committee and maybe to the full board, like whether that's not holding board meetings in July or whatever that is. In August, maybe when school starts to give staff a break, like, I would love to hear that. Because I am a workaholic and like trustee Smith will said, I love my committees, both of them. Um, and if it was up to me, I would have weekly meetings and exhausted, but I'll do it, right? But I do think that we, it's, it's not just about us, even though we feel urgent, uh, it's about the people doing the work. So, thank you. I just saw the chat, Dr. Hurst. I think that would be really helpful, um, at least for me.
Board member question?
Yeah, um, you know, just, just sitting here, just, you know, just, just reflecting on everything that's being said. We should be following the best practices to be the best board that we can be. And if we're, need to make corrections, we just need to make corrections. Um, and it, it goes back to my thing, you can't put new wine into old wine skis. It won't work. Whatever we do, we got to make sure we put newness into newness to make it and, and, and do the things accordingly. Because if you try to continue to put new stuff in old ways, it's not going to hold, it's not going to contain, and it's not going to be effective. We have to look at the best things, and that's what we hear. We, we hear, we're learning. And we are putting things together, and so that's what we have to do. Um, and, you, you know, um, we really have the. You know, it, it's always best to put things in, in, in as best practices in the beginning. And if we do that, and if we do things well, we will be. A, a doggone good, you know, board and, and conducting ourselves and meetings and whatever we do in a timely manner. And, uh, and being effective. So, so we, we, we got to put the best practices in place. And so we learn, and, um, let's make the changes.
Mr. Phillips.
Two questions. Well, one's a clarifying question. So, when we talk about. And this is from Mr. Brown. He said, the way he likes to see things is that. I think this is what he said, so I'm wrong to say I got it wrong. To, but to put public comment. At the beginning of the meeting, I'm, I'm thinking the very beginning, that's what you're saying, like before, like we pledge allegiance. We do roll call and then we take public comment right away. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, the only alternative I would offer to that, if there's any student recognition to be done, which I think is always important. I would always do that first. That puts the students out front, then I would do public comment.
Okay, so, the exception is if there's student recognition. Are there other recognitions, like staff recognition?
Yeah, yeah, the, you know, the good news, the good news stuff, you know, the, the. I'd always just start a meeting on a different note when, when you can recognize good work by staff and students. Then I would do the public comment, but that's me.
Okay, so the first thing I'm going to say then is that's exactly what we do. So we open up the meeting, and then we do our pledge of allegiance. The stuff that you saw, the stuff that you saw, we did at the, I did at the beginning of the meeting, right? If this was a regular board meeting, the only thing that would have happened before that. Is some kind of recognition, whether it's a staff or students, that's the, or, or it's Black History Month, so we do the Black History Month resolution. So what you're describing is what we actually do right now.
And then.
But you also do co-public comment before your each, each agenda item.
Yes, and so that's what I want clarification about, but the general public comment, what you just described is what we actually already do. But the public comment for the items, so are you saying not to do public comment for each item? Or how are you saying that part works?
The, at the same time at the beginning. So at the open, at the public comment, if you have comments on any agenda or non-agenda items. That's when it's done.
Right.
And we can do that, like, under the round act?
Yes.
She can.
So, board, I'm just going to say this to you all, I'm going to be quiet. If, I don't have any problem trying this, but if people start calling in and saying. Well, if people start calling in and saying, well, the agenda, public comment is not with the item. And you're doing it early in the beginning, and I start getting accused of silencing people. Um, for not doing this, and you know that's what's going to happen.
Okay, so. Okay, but think about this, how, how do we do change in a way that is, is effective? One, one might be, and I think the public would be receptive to this. We're really trying to improve the organization of our board meetings, so we don't keep you up till two in the morning and late at night. We're trying to be a more efficient, respectful of your time and everybody's time. So, I mean, and maybe you, you do it once you have two or a couple of meetings a month. Maybe you try it at a couple of meetings first and say, so this meeting, this is what we're going to do. And the next meeting we'll try, and I, I, I think that's okay. If, if, if people know that you're trying to improve your operation in respect to them and in respect to the staff. And respect to your own time, I think you don't have to do it abruptly. You can ease into it. There's different ways to finesse change in a way that'll make it work. Trying it during the, the summer might be a good time because it's a little bit different tempo, something like this in the summertime. And it's sometimes it's agenda specific too. Remember, an agenda is a tool. It's not something that has to be fixed in time and place. If there were a big agenda item where you felt it were, was important. To allow specific public comment on that item, you could do that. You know, you know, agenda, look at your agendas as tools for efficiency. And, you know, a general, try to get your public comment at the beginning, agenda, non-agenda. Make a transition plan, think about if there's a big discussion item that you want, you know there's going to be public input. Then maybe on that item, then you want to allow it that way, but you don't have to, that doesn't mean you have to do it on every item. So there are all sorts of ways to finesse this, but if people understand what you're trying to do, is make it better for everybody. I think most people are going to get that.
How much time? Because, you know, normally it would be this amount of time for this item, like twenty minutes unless it's extended. So if we're going to do all public comment at the beginning, which is the general public comment and the item-specific comment. How much time do we leave open for public comment?
I, I think it could be agenda-specific, but I think your two-minute time limit is a good one, and I would stick with that. And, uh, I mean, it's going to take a little while to, to transition, but I. I think you would allow an hour and then maybe at the end of the meeting. If there's anybody, yeah, an hour, an hour and a half, maybe. It depends, again, trustee Phil, if, what's on the agenda? If you're doing something like graduation requirements, you know, that's a, or you. Or you're doing something major with, you know, consolidation of school facilities. You, you could almost argue that needs to be a one-agenda meet, item meeting. And because you just know there's going to be a lot, and justifiably sold a lot of information. Maybe that's an extra meeting that month, where you just pull that, the two big items out, the one big item, and you focus on that. But what you've fallen into, in my judgment, is a pattern now where every item on the agenda. No matter if it's importance, is getting comment, that it is just taking your meeting on and on and on.
Mr. Brown, I'm going to say this, because it's really interesting, and I'll be quiet with it. But what you just said is really interesting to, to me because there's a lot of criticism about how we do public comment. But I actually think that there's more public comment now than there has ever been. Because of the pattern that you just said we fall into, so like, we're, I'm like, there's constant criticism, silencing, not being transparent. But there's more public comment than there's ever been that I've known since I've been watching board meetings. Because of literally the pattern that we are doing following the rules. But, board, if you guys are, are want to as a group. And, and, and give me flexibility to not follow that rule for this, to try this out, I'm happy to try it. And, and to put it all in the front and, and let it roll for an hour and, and see how it works, if that's what y'all want to do.
Smith Foles, and then Dimitri.
So for me, I heard two different things, like, and I, and I heard Mr. Brown say transition, right? So for me, I heard two different ways of doing this. We can put public comment at the very beginning for anything, on the agenda or off the agenda. That was one, that was one way of doing it. Another way I've heard that you guys commented on doing it is when we actually, if we stick to the way that we have it now. If we stick to the way that we do discussion and action items. One way to do that still is to put the public comment before the presentation. And then have the public comment, presentation, question and discussion. That's also a way of doing it. So would it be prudent of us, because we're transitioning our community? Would it be prudent of us to start with what the no is? They know that we have discussion items and action items, but change that order and put public comment first. Inside that discussion item, for example, discussion item on the special ed, the special ed, uh, master plan. Put the public comment first, have the presentation about the special ed master plan, and then the board does your question and discussion. And then have a transition time that we go, what Mr. Mr. Brown said, maybe over the summer, to where we go where we just put this. Public comment at the very beginning of our agenda about everything, but for these last two or three meetings that we have. See what it looks like if we go inside the agenda and just put public, public comment before our presentations. And then do our question and discussion, have a transition to where in the summertime when we have those meetings, or if we have those meetings. We put public comment in the very beginning, maybe even into fall a little bit, into August and September. Put public comment at the very beginning of the meeting for things on and off the agenda. Is, is that doable? Is that, is that something you would think would be okay, or do we need to just pick a lane and go there?
I, I think that's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just, I, I, I think that's a reasonable pro, as long as you inform the community, the staff, here's what we're doing. Our goal is to make our meetings, uh, more, uh, more efficient, more respectful of your time. And more respectful of the staff. We're going to try a couple of different things. And, uh, over the summer provides us an opportunity to do that, but don't just spring it on people. Just, you know, but, you know, say, here's where, you know, we spent a lot of time in these workshops. We're working on improving our, 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 our handling of board meetings, a lot of other things. We're learning some things about that, uh, O three said about best practices. And we want to be conscientious of that and try a couple of things. Let's see what works. And then in the fall, we'll probably know where we are and what we can go forward with.
I think that, for me, I think that that is a, a way of doing it to where you are walking your community through the change.
Yes.
Walking your community through the change while valuing and listening to what they have asked or requested. Or, and that way you won't be accused of silencing, you won't be accused of, you know, doing things that are outside of what the community wants to be. Its norms of its board, of its norms and the standards that it wants the board to uphold, which is that listening part of it. But I do agree, Mr. Brown and Mr. Garza, if we can get this part correct, then we can get to the business of the board. And yes, the part of the business of the board is listening, but we can also get to the other business of the board. So I like the idea and board colleagues, what I would like is the idea of what I just said, something where we have a transition. It's where we start with just flipping the way we handle presentations, and we put public comment before the presentations. And then we have a transition period to where in the summer and early fall, we put public comment at the very beginning. But we are letting our community know that we're, we're changing, we're, we're, we're going towards a change.
Dimitri, and then trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I like both approaches. Um, I wonder if we could start with a hybrid. And, and, and this, and maybe, um, extend the beginning of the agenda, public comment. Because what I'm hearing from people is that they don't want to stay till eleven PM to talk on the item that they came for, right? So.
Right, right.
So, so I think that if we extend the public comment at the beginning, and then maybe decrease. Because we also don't want to have three meetings for one meeting, right? So if we also maybe decrease our public comment within the item to ten minutes instead of twenty. Uh, maybe that would allow still very, to be very transparent, but then it would also not just increase our meeting even further. But we do want to hear from the public, right? So, um. Maybe that could be another, plus, what I'm seeing in other districts as well is that there is a third opportunity, which is. That people can send their public comments ahead of the meeting to a specific email. And those get put on the record and get sent to all the board members, I think an hour before the board meeting too.
That'll work, good.
So that, and maybe that's something else I would propose, uh, colleagues and president Phillips to, um, to also add that. Um, because, uh, uh, we could, we could try all modes and see if it does help, if it does reduce things. Uh, and I think that it would really hit all the things that we're hearing from people. About accessibility and, 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 and inclusion. So, so just to repeat, adding more time to the beginning one, decreasing the, the public comment in the item. Uh, to ten minutes, but maybe allow both at the beginning, and then in the fall, if we think that we can get away for, from the. Public comment and the items, I, I would be okay with that if it works.
Trustee Reckler.
So just personally, as someone who used to give a lot of public comment. I would find it almost impossible to give a decent public comment without hearing the presentation first. Maybe that's just me, but listening to that presentation informed what I was going to say. And additionally, as a board member now, we hear the presentation. I hear people listen to the presentation and react to it and give comment on the presentation, which is what I want as a board member to hear. You know, something that's fresh and not stale, that's been canned, um, because you learn a lot through the presentations. And so I'm willing to try, uh, anything new, but I have a feeling that this might. Might not be what we're, we're thinking, uh, but I'm willing to try it.
Christie Phillips, president Phillips.
Just two quick things. I think the idea of people being able to submit, um, Dr. Hurst, people being able to submit their, um, public comment in advance. Some people do it anyway, but knowing that they can do that, um, and advertising that they can do that. Um, I think that that is a, a really good idea. I, I'm concerned about the, the hybrid approach. And the reason why I'm concerned about it is a couple of reasons. Will, we end up doing. In a way, double public comment. Uh, oh, his, his email just, oh, there he is. He, so like, we end up doing double public comment, but like. It's one thing for you guys to be like. Yeah, you can have flexibility to, with the Rosenberg's rules and like, you know, call the public comment before the rest of it. Right? It's, but like, how long the public comment is, like, that's actually our board policy. You know, that, that, that's our board policy, so like, we can't. Like, I can't go in there and be like, it's going to be ten minutes tonight, right? Um, because the board policy says how long it is going to be. That's like the twenty-minute thing. So. I would like us to, I, I'm fine. I would like us to, I, I'm fine with the transitioning part. I do have concerns for the reasons I just stated with doing the, the double public comment. I do think that what Trustee Reckler said as well, uh, with Rosenberg's. One of the things that I like about Rosenberg is that when people give public comment to us, that they're actually giving us informed comment. Um, because they actually got to listen and were educated before on the issue before. Uh, but I'm willing, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to, to, you know, to try flipping them. I'm, I'm willing to try them in the beginning. I kind of don't want to do both at the same time for the reason that I, I said. Um, but which leads me to another question. So I was in a CSBA meeting. Um, and they told us in the meeting, it was a president's meeting. And Trustee Smith Foles was there as well. She's, they, they, the lady, I said she, it wasn't Trustee Smith Foles, but the lady who was presenting. She said that school board meetings are meetings in public, not public meetings. And I feel like the public thinks that this is their meeting and that it is a public meeting. And it's not. Uh, and I think they have been used to it being a public meeting for so many years that they don't know what it, it really is supposed to look like. They think that it's, you know, like, it's, I'm not trying to be funny, but like, like it's ancient Greece. And everybody's supposed to come sit around the Parthenon and every member of the community gets to talk. And that's not what this is. So like, if you stop, trust directly. So, but like, can you spend some time and just talk about what it means when you, when, when they tell us at the CSBA meetings that it is a meeting in public, not a public meeting?
There, there's a difference between what I would call a town hall meeting. A town hall meeting is when you get together, the purpose of it is to listen to members of the community talk about issues that are important to them. That is an important function of an elected body, whether it's a city council, a, uh, the United States. From, you know, public hearings are held by congressional committees and something like that. Uh, and it's possible to agenda's some of those every year. Uh, and that people know that there's that opportunity out there. But the other part of this, the trustees have responsibility, I use this term fiduciary responsibilities they have to exercise. And you, you, hopefully you're of sound state of mind and body when you do that. You're not falling over exhausted on the table at 2:00 in the morning. And when you're making an important decision about a financial commitment personnel issue or, uh, superintendent interview or whatever it is. And, uh, there's room for both, is what I'm saying. It's a matter of how you organize yourselves. But I would absolutely agree. I, I know Juan and I have used this phrase. If we've used it 100 times, we've used it 1,000. A board meeting is a meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting. Okay, like a town hall meeting is. So when you think of public meeting, think of town hall meeting. You know, the listening, what are you thinking about this issue? And I think it's important to have those town hall meetings every year on the part of the board. And if you make that as a matter of practice, then people will start to gravitate toward that, I think, hopefully.
Mm-hmm. And you also have task force meetings for specific topics too. So, uh, Trustee Paul Smith, and then I think we need to bring closure or wrap, wrap ourselves around this and come to some consensus.
I think one of the things that happens is the trust has been eroded so much that everybody comes to the board for everything. But if the trust was not eroded and then the, the levels of communication, first you go here, then you go here, then you go here, then you go here. If that was established, then I think that we would be answering our own question. We would be solving our own problem. I think that now that we have new leadership in place with the superintendent that we need to phase our community into going the route that they're supposed to go under the guise of how we serve the public in our community. For example, i- if we, if we give our teachers the resource, the time and the space to have conversations with parents and the parents won't go to the principal. If we give the time and the resource and the space for the principal to have conversations with the parent, then they won't go to the, the, the head of the principals, I forgot what it's, that's called in the district. And then if they have the time and the space and it won't go to the superintendent, and if he has the time and the space, it won't come to the board. But I think the problem is there's no trust, no time, no space, no grace to be able to actually do this work. So we get a lot of that comments, uh, we get a lot of comments, we get a lot of concern, we get a lot of the issues. But I think establishing one thing will help establish another thing. Right now, we've established that we have a superintendent who is conscientious, who is listening, who is responsive. Great. Now we've got to phase our community into using that resource instead of using the public comment. That's one thing that we can do. The other thing that we can do is understand that, yes, we are having a, a, a board meeting in public, right? But when we do have those board meetings in public, we have to have the space to hear all the pertinent information. So maybe we need to talk about, once we get this part of public comment under control and, and really understanding how it works better with the best practices. Are we going to bring back standing reports from commit, from other committees, not just our academic and uh, safety facilities, et cetera, but are we bringing back the CBOC report? Are we bringing back the union report? Are we bringing back the, the OASIA report or the APAC report? Like, are we doing that? Because again, I think that if you, if we establish the correct order, then our meetings will run more efficiently. I'm not saying we have to bring those back. I'm saying that's part of a larger conversation that we have. Once we start phasing our community in to understanding, here's a way that you can have your questions answered and your comments taken, uh, taken into account and for policy to be brought back forth. Am, am I making myself very clear, Mr. Garza? Because I really think that one of the problems we have or we have as a board is that there's an erosion of trust with the district wanting or being able to or helping our community. So they go to the top. They go to, okay, I want you to know that this issue is happening. I want you to know that this is the problem I'm having. I want you to know this. But if we build up the bottom firmly, and I don't mean bottom in a negative way, I'm talking about the layers of an organization. If every layer of the organization is firm, then I think that we can actually have some real data on how much comment we're getting and what we really need to look at.
And I, and I think you're right. And I think a lot of that came out in the surveys. You, you had thousands and thousands of survey responses to different things. And a lot of those issues and concerns came up. So we're beginning to go in circles a little bit here. And I think, if I can kind of summarize and then turn it over to Dr. Hurst to, to hear what his preference is on this. I think that all of you are concerned or to a degree have some dissatisfaction with the length and the structure of the meetings that you've had, that along board meetings and that you are interested in some form of improvement with changes that could possibly be transitioned in. There was some models that were given. And, and I, and I do respect what Trustee Reckler, uh, shared with regard to her position on liking to hear the presentation first prior to making a comment, you know, that, that's, that's a good perspective to have. But right now, I think where you are is at, at a point where you are interested in some type of change and some type of transition into that. And a couple of models have been floated. Dr. Hurst, would you, uh, are you prepared to comment on this?
Yes, sir. So uh, one of the things I would just kind of echo, uh, what I shared earlier. Um, and I really do believe this, and I have data to support this, that, um, our organization is, is tired. Um, it's very clear, teachers are tired, classified, uh, managers are tired. So when it comes down to really doing the work, and that's what we've really been talking about when we go back to our conversation on Sunday. Really, the mission of the school district, supporting teaching and learning. So are we set, are we a healthy organization to be able to do that? The answer is clearly, we are not. So some changes absolutely need to be made. And I will go back and just echo what I said, uh, being here for two weeks. I can clearly see it. I can clearly see a worn out, tired organization that is not fit and not healthy to, to really advance student learning. So we are going to have to make some, um, hard decisions. Um, I can make some recommendations to the board and, um, in collaboration with you, Mr. Garza, and also Mr. Brown and also Sandy. And I could do that fairly quickly. I think, um, some of the pieces that I've certainly heard, um, from board members, one is the structure of the board members. When I'm talking about structure, I'm talking about pre-work that can be done. So I do have a proposal, uh, that I will bring forward to the board. Um, and I do believe that there's some pieces, and I've talked to our organization about this as well. And, um, Trustee Gonzalez Hoyer, um, certainly mentioned this, that there should be pre-work that is done, uh, with the cabinet uh, to better prepare the board, to better prepare for these meetings. So it's really about the information that they're getting and how we're communicating with them. So we need to fine tune that element. I think that will improve, you know, a piece of the board meetings. Uh, another piece is the, um, public comment. And I've heard, uh, the board share some very specific ideas. Um, I heard Trustee, uh, Trustee Reckler as well, share her thoughts. And I have to take all of that into consideration. But again, I'm going to bring forth a, uh, proposal to the board on public comment. Uh, the committee meetings, I'm just going to, uh, share this. It's, it's certainly my belief in watching, because I have watched, uh, the committee meetings. Uh, and I didn't share this earlier. I do believe that they're operational in nature and that a lot of the work that's happening that, um, uh, can, is being done and should be done by the organization and then have another structure that's reported to the board. But as you were saying, I think, Mr. Garza, I don't think that the purpose and intent of a committee is to be ongoing for an extended amount of time. It should be to solve a very particular issue, specific issue for a few meetings and then that's it. But what I've seen and experienced and heard from people from the organization is that's not the case, that these are ongoing committee meetings. And, and really, a win for us could be reexamining those committee meetings and let the organization do that work. If, if we could just stop those committee meetings, um, that would be a win for the organization. Uh, if we can look at how we are addressing the public comment, that would be a win for the organization. Because reality is, by our next session or next couple of sessions, there's going to be some very clear expectations um, coming from the board. And right now, we are not suited to address those expectations that's coming down. Uh, that's going to be coming down for us. Uh, to summarize, I will have, um, a recommendation for the board. I will want to talk with you, Mr. Garza and Mr. Brown, just to run some things by you, and then I'm going to send that recommendation to the board.
Okay. Are we okay with moving forward after that? Thumbs up? All right. May I suggest a five-minute break to get some water and take care of some personal hygiene?
Yes, you may. You may. That's a great suggestion, sir.
Okay, so it is 8:57 by my watch. Uh, 9:04. Okay, 9:04. Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, yes.
Oops, already left. I moved, so move, Mr. Phillips, so move, uh, President Phillips, so moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved at second, dude. Um, I don't even know where, oh, Mr. Gonzalez.
Gonzalez Hoyer's first.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Foles, yes?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Hey, Mr. Brown, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
All right, so I got an email. And, uh, the email, not going to read a name or anything like that, but the email says it's about bargaining, right? And it compares our district to another district. And basically says, this district over here is doing this, why can't we do it? Uh, and then says other things. I try to answer emails that go to me, um, even if it's just to acknowledge them. But how would you redirect that email? Uh, because I don't want to just ignore it and pretend like I'm not seeing it. Uh cuz I don't wanna just ignore it and pretend like I'm not seeing it. Uh but I don't wanna, you know.
I I think what I would say is uh um thank, I I would first of all acknowledge that you got it. And thank the person for taking the time to communicate. Uh forward your email to the superintendent and ask him to uh give some thought to this and respond to you. Something like that. But I would ju- I would not take a position on it, trustee Phillips. I would say, thank you. And uh this is an issue of uh that is of importance. And I'll be discussing it with the superintendent or I refer this to the superintendent for his consideration. And uh ask him to respond or something like that.
So, so. In a situation where you get, I'm making this number up, two hundred emails, right? Realistically. Is it realistic to forward two hundred emails about the same thing and be like, he'll respond?
Well, the response can doesn't mean necessarily an individual. Uh you know, that's one to think of. The response could be a statement from the superintendent's office, from public communications. It can come in a variety. I wouldn't commit an individual response for sure. You know, and. I remember when I used to do this for, I used to work in the United States Senate. And one of my jobs was to respond to, you know, if we got a lot of letters on a particular subject. And we prepared a response to those, that's what went to everybody under the senator's signature. And there was, so there was some follow-up. Anytime we got a letter, we responded to it. But sometimes it would be a generic response, like on the two hundred emails. Cuz you can't answer two hundred emails individually. I think most people know that. And to say that, uh thank you, uh your concern is important and will be uh somebody from the district will be getting back to you or something like that. But thi- this is often a tactic sometimes to put pressure. On uh, you know, it's a pressure tactic sometimes from a particular group to get something done and. It's compounded by this whole social media communication now that we have with. People posting stuff on Facebooks and, you know, and and do I have to respond and? And all that and uh we do have a, we do have a superintendent, we have a good public communications department in West Contra Costa. And when these issues start to happen, they need, they they need to be and they are, you know, on top of it. They should help you with that. But you can't be in, I don't think you can be in the position of of answering each of those. Where every time something appears on a social media site.
Can't, you can't do that. You don't have enough time to do it. And as Jim mentioned, sometimes that's lobbying and tactics that's used by. Uh special interest groups to overwhelm and influence and that's that's normal. That's part of the process. So it's just, again, redirecting. No, thank you. That concern will be forwarded to the superintendent's office. That may be your response.
Yeah, we all, uh everybody on that that's on the screen that I can see now suffers from. A a a a good problem, which is, I'm just gonna call it conscientiousness. You are all very conscientious people. You wanna be responsive to people. You care about what people say. You want, you want your community to have a voice. But as an organization, there has to be some coordinated response. To volume mail, to individual things and how, what's the protocol that we have, the protocols. Around those kinds of communications, so that we all don't go under. Because that's.
So we've had some uh healthy discussion on quite a, quite a bit of topics there. We went back into. The roles and responsibilities and I think it was some good discussion on topics that are good for the organization. And some uh recommendations will be coming forward to you from Dr. First, Dr. Hurst in the coming meetings. So I'd like to move on with the PowerPoint. The goal now is to finish the PowerPoint and then cover the evaluation process at the next meeting. Uh our intent is to end at nine thirty, as as we said that when we started. Understanding that we're gonna take care of what we can take care of tonight and uh. Continue with with the topics in 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 a good fashion. So we went into deeper. Uh the what and the how on particular subjects. So let's move on to the next slide. You gave examples of the what structures. Continue. We talked about structures and the, and we've been talking about these structures and processes this evening to a great degree. And that's important. Next slide. We talked about communication and and we agreed on some some uh when, when you expected a phone call and what could wait, what could be text. Uh taking care of the issues, maybe a staff member calling, all of that. You did cover very well. Good discussion. Next slide. And this is where we were. You did agree to some protocols. One of them was how to handle calls from. Parents, staff and community and you were in different places with that. The agreement that you came to was, you would try to uh ask whoever was sharing the concern. Or complain with you if they've talked to the teacher, if that was the source of the concern. We talked about redirecting them to the, if it was the athletic director. So we gave different examples and came up with some agreement. And then it would go to the district office with student services. And uh Dr. Hurst was gonna prepare a summary of that for you, the agreements. With school visits, uh there was not a protocol that was agreed on. Because Dr. Hurst was still listening to the uh different voices of the staff, the sites. And establishing, reestablishing the trust and relationship. So he was gonna come back to you with that. It's some future board meeting, correct, Dr. Hurst?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we were gonna pick up on board member request for information. So there's two types of of uh protocols in this arena. One is board member request for information in general. On topics of particular interest to a board member. And then the other is board member request for information on board agenda items. So let's talk about the board agenda items fir- first. Your meetings are what day of the week?
Wednesdays.
Okay, your meetings on Wednesday. So when do you get your board packet?
Friday afternoon.
Friday.
Friday. So is Monday at noon. A reasonable time if you have a question on a particular. Item on the board agenda to get it in so that staff has time to respond.
So the previous protocol had been Sunday night to hit Monday's cabinet.
Repeat, repeat.
The previous protocol had been Sunday night or early Monday morning to hit uh cabinet. Monday's cabinet meeting. So Dr. Hurst may wanna establish something else. I would very much like to work on a no set daytime cutoff.
How has that worked out? Dimitri?
Thanks. Yeah, I gotta be honest. Um it's been really difficult for me to get questions in by Sunday night. Um I, I I wanna say I do it rarely at this point because uh between weekend meetings and just trying to. Fit a few hours with family, like. I I really review the agenda on Mondays. I'm just being honest with all of you and I'm not following the previous protocol we had agreed on. Uh when to do this, but it's just my reality is just, it doesn't fit. Um so I don't know if it's maybe finding what works for each individual. Um but or or we find maybe a a way that it works for everyone, but um. I agree with trustee Reckler, if we could just now put a timeline and we can just find uh a new, something that works. Uh like Wednesday morning check-ins with each board member with their questions. I think that might be the most helpful thing for me specifically. Um I think I just try to commit for something that I just wasn't ready for. Um I can maybe commit for Tuesday, but Sunday is just not, it wasn't working for me.
Mr. Phillips?
I remember when I got on the board, uh how hard it was for me. Um to be able to get the meeting, and I got kids and all that stuff and work, to be able to. Get the the agenda on Friday. And then try to read it over the weekend and then you end up not reading it over the weekend because you have a life, right? Um and then you're like scrambling and then like. I have times where it's four o'clock on Wednesday and I finished reading the agenda, right? Um so um, Dr. Hurst, is there a way for? And I remember I asked, can we get the agenda earlier than Friday? Um and that was a a issue for different reasons, but but Dr. Hurst, is it possible for the board members? For all of us to either be able to see the agenda or some, or in some kind of draft form? So everybody is not trying to kill themselves over the weekend. Uh so they could get questions in by Sunday night.
Yeah, I think um so absolutely. Um I think you and I have spoken about this, um certainly an idea about the the format of our board. Package. And maybe an idea is for me to talk with the board. And maybe even offline about another option that we could look at. So maybe not right now is the best time, but to answer your question first about um. Not on a Sunday or not on a Monday. Uh I think I always try to be responsive to the questions that you have, so I think what we're gonna share is that. Board members, contact me. Um I'm gonna work to get you the answer. And I understand we all have lives, so it's not gonna be Sunday. If it's Monday or Tuesday or even Wednesday, we're gonna work hard to get you the answer.
Uh just so I'm clear, the questions come to the superintendent. And the responses come from, uh do you refer those out then to uh?
Yeah.
Business or HR and they might get the response from that person and then you're copied. Uh and you're you're copied on the response?
Yes, sir. So the board member will send me an email or call or whatever. And then I'll contact the person, they'll give me the information and then I'll get it back to the board member um pretty quickly.
And do board members know what the other board members ask or are these all handled individually?
I I can certainly do that. I can certainly, if it's a question from a board member. Um well, and really, I've not had a board meeting with this board. I've had these retreats, so.
Yeah.
A real board meeting, so I've not experienced that yet. But I could certainly do that. If a board member asks a question, I could send it out to everyone.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the, what the, what the protocol has been, so that you're aware of that.
Uh President Phillips, maybe one of the board members, you can share an expectation around that.
It's been different. It kinda goes back to the earlier thing where we asked about, is there something to let us know? So sometimes. Um there are questions that are specific and they haven't gone out and other times they have, so I, on that one. I think it, you know, if it's something that, you know, you think everybody would benefit from, it's the same answer from before. And if not, it's just, you know, somebody has some specific thing. I I think it's fine.
Dimitri?
And I think that, Dr. Hurst, you did it earlier today, last night, I'm maybe mixed up, but. Someone, one of the board members had asked specific questions about today's retreat and because you felt that it was. Information we could all benefit from, you actually sent us all the answer to those questions. I think that's a fine protocol. Like if you feel like it'll be helpful for us for an item. Like I would definitely welcome seeing the questions from other of my colleagues, but um. If you don't feel like it, then we don't need to get them.
That's, trustee Gonzalez Hoy, that's exactly what I was gonna say and the same example I was gonna use. Like it was a question that affected everyone, so I would love, I like the fact that everyone got the same answer. I think that'd cut down on the amount of emails you get too, from board members, because a lot of us ask the exact same questions. So if already know that another trustee asked it, ask that question, I'm not gonna turn around and ask you the same question. So and it'd give me more information because then I can see what another board member's perspective is. I was like, oh, I didn't even think about that. Now I have that perspective and that information too. I think that would just push our board meetings along. You know, down the track better also.
Right, good. All right, we have an understanding on that protocol or practice there and we're gonna give uh Dr. Hurst some time to experience a couple of board meetings. And if there are necessary uh adjustments that can be made, they can be made at that time after. After a few board meetings. Uh moving on to calls from the unions or associations, we covered that. We got into that little bit and roles and responsibilities. Actually, we got into it quite a bit. So we, are there other common areas where you feel that you need to have an understanding or a? Discussion or a protocol? Or have we hit most of the main areas?
I think we're gonna have to talk about social media. I think we're gonna have to talk about. What that looks like if we have certain protocols around that and certain standards, cuz I mean, that's a new, that's a new communication avenue.
I think that's the next slide. Let let me move over to the next slide. Uh we talked about this. What is a board meeting? A board meeting is a meeting of the board in public. A board meeting is not a public board meeting, so move on to the next slide. Okay. Uh we talked about public hearing, public comments on items. I think all of you know the rules with the Brown Act on serial meetings. And so let's spend a little time on social media. What has been the practice and what is the concern that we need to talk about regarding social media? Do you have a, do you have a policy? Do you have a a practice? Do you have a protocol? Do you have a procedure? Do you have anything, an understanding, anything on that?
So I can tell you my protocol personally. I have a social media, I have a Facebook page. And I don't put anything out on my Facebook page until after the board decision has been made. So if a board decision has been made, then I may put a comment about. Why I voted a certain way on that board decision on my Facebook page, but I do that after the decision has already been made. Does that make sense, Mr. Garza?
Makes sense.
So I don't put the the things that I put on my social media page before any board meeting is very generic, generic. Meeting times is what we're doing. I may put um. I don't know, it's just stuff like that, but I don't put an opinion out until after. The direction of the board has already been given.
Do you put informational items, like there's gonna be a graduation, there's gonna be?
Right, I'll put, I'll put flyers up, like if we have the um African-American student of honors, that's a flyer that I put up. I put up a historical piece about Memorial Day up on my Facebook page. I put up. Um when we have academic subcommittee or academic committee meetings, I'll put those up. Um I'll put that we're having a board meeting. The last thing I just posted, I believe, was the academic, but before that I posted about. Uh here's my schedule, board meeting tomorrow, another board meeting. I think I put Hercules' graduation on there or something like that.
It, are there other practices with other board meetings related to social media?
Let me, let me ask about that, Jibba. So, you know, th- this will really date me. So in 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 my years, you know, there wasn't social media. So the communications department, the superintendent's office, we always put out a summary of the meeting. Here's what happened. Here's what we do. Are are communications now coming from each of you individually? To a group of people, constituents, whoever follows your Facebook page? Is there any coordination in what you all say to your constituents about this? Is everybody on their own? I I'm just trying, uh this is a different world for me and I'm just trying to understand it.
So for me, I will pull flyers from the district. I will pull the district flyers out and I will put them on my Facebook page, right? My Facebook page is only to people who have liked it. So it went from my campaign page to now my community page as a trustee. So I will put things like, I will put things, I will take district flyers and put them up. I put Dr. Hurst uh welcome. His Facebook Live event. I put it up on my Facebook page, like here, Facebook Live is happening now, Dr. Hurst is speaking, you know. Catch it, catch it. Um I put something, the last post, I said I had a great meeting with West County Mandarin PTA. Like I put that on my personal Facebook page. Those are the type of posts that I put out. Uh Mr. Garza's or Mr. Brown, to answer your question, I don't believe there's coordinated. Uh, Mr. Garza or Mr. Brown, to answer your question, I don't believe there's coordinated comments between all of us. I think that we kinda all are just kinda doing our own thing on social media. Some of us use it a lot. Some of us use it just to highlight certain things. Some of us use, haven't used it since our campaign. It just, it, 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 we're kinda all over the place with that.
Dimitri?
No, I, I, I actually was gonna say what trustee Smith Folds just said, although I, I will add that I think there have been times where I have specifically tagged one of my colleagues. Uh, for example, trustee Reckler and I were doing hubs together in one school and I posted a picture of her and I, but I made sure only to tag her because of the Brown Act, right? Um, or trustee Smith Folds and I uh wrote a co-statement together once because of a vote that we took that was different from the rest of our colleagues. Um, but um, I think that we're all pretty conscious about the Brown Act online. Um, uh, I would say, but um you know, some of us do manage also, not just our personal uh pages, but some other pages too. Uh, so I think that maybe that's where it gets murky a little bit. Like I manage one of the most popular pages in the WCCOSD. I know uh, President Phillips does as well and a couple others, I think. So maybe that's where things get murky, but um I mean, I, I would say that from the majority of things, I don't, I've, I've never seen us work with more than one person on social media on, on something uh because we've been conscious of the Brown Act.
Are you discussing district business on social media though?
Not together.
Yeah, not together. We, we, I think we all put out our individual opinions at one point, maybe not everyone, uh, but I, I have put out my personal opinion on things at times. Um, but definitely I don't go into trustee Phillips' Facebook page and I'm like trustee Phillips, well, I think this or trustee Reckler, this is what I think. Now, it's been like me putting it on my own page, like this is what I think or this is what happened and this is why I did what I did or whatever, right? But no.
And I'm trying to get an understanding is, are some of those opinions on agenda items that are coming up?
I don't. I will list that there is a board meeting. I may pull out topics of interest. Here's the media bits. I never give opinion. I try to keep it as bland and factual as possible. I don't follow any other trustees' pages. I don't look at them. I barely tweet. I it's as bland and neutral as I can possibly make it while still maintaining a minor presence.
Where does, where does the role of your public information or communications person, Mr. and Mr. Jordan, come to play with the information that some of you are talking about? Are you duplicating?
I'm sorry, Mr. Trust, I'm sorry, President Phillips, go ahead.
Some of it is duplication. I think we all, I know I share stuff that Mr. Jordan puts out uh and we like stuff on the district's page, but then some of it is just like us. You know, I think just being us. I mean, so it's a mixture of the two.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think that it's a, I think that we pull people, I think we all pull, like, most of us pull flyers and we'll pull bits of information like that, but I don't I think it's a mixture of both. I think that's why we need clarity, like we need clarity about around this issue. I think that trustee Gonzalez Hoy was right. I think around the Brown Act, I think we're all pretty good. Like we, we're careful not to be the spoke and the will and all of that when it comes to social media. I think just what's, one of the questions would be what's the best policy or the best practices around what we do put on our social media? Are there parameters around that?
Trustee Reckler?
But at the same time, we are elected public officials and we can run our own communications operations as elected public officials, as long as we adhere to the rules of the Brown Act and you know, whatever core guiding beliefs you have. Like I will never debate anybody on Facebook ever, 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 ever. I will pick up the phone and have a conversation. So, you know, that, that is within our right as citizens and as elected officials.
Okay.
I agree with that trustee Reckler. I just want, for me, it's just what's the best practice that we don't do harm to the organization and we don't do harm to negotiations or bargaining or individual groups that we don't, how, how do we do no harm is?
I agree with you. I agree with you. Yeah, I agree with you.
And actually, um, I was recently working with a, a school board not too long ago. And uh, I need to apologize to you because I should have sent you, there was, there's been a recent court ruling on board member use of social media. And I should have sent that to you in advance. Uh, that, that might have helped this conversation a little more about that recent ruling. So I'm not, I'm not sure whether we should send that to you and then finalize this conversation because it, it, it just, the, the court ruling clearly defines board member use of social media. What is acceptable and what is not? Jim, your thoughts? Should we share that article with them uh that was put out on, on board social media? And then finish this conversation with that?
Yeah, I, I think so. I think they should have it. Yeah, I'd.
So then I'll, I'll send it to uh Dr. Hurst. Either later tonight, if I'm, if I don't uh, or early tomorrow morning. He'll share it with you and then we can bring closure to this at, at the beginning. It shouldn't be a very short conversation. At our next meeting, is that okay?
Mr. Garza, can I just say something really quick?
Sure.
Like, I do look forward to seeing uh the ruling. Um, and I think we've had good conversations around like operations and trying to avoid operational conversations and to not be part of bargaining and, and all of that kinda stuff. But like everybody on here has like First Amendment rights. And so like I don't, I wanna, want us to be very careful about talking about policies to I'm not talking about the operational stuff. I totally get that, right? But like policies to prohibit First Amendment rights and particularly First Amendment rights of elected officials, so.
And that's exactly why I suggest that we look at that court ruling first because it does, it does clarify a lot of the things. There is that and not, and you, you made a key point where you said not limit for First Amendment, right? That's correct. But you can also have some agreements about, you know, the operational things and those things that impact the operation of the district. So I will send that to Dr. Hurst either tonight or tomorrow morning. I'll forward it to you and we'll bring closure through a brief conversation at, at the start of our next uh meeting. Fair enough. Hey, Jim, you wanna bring closure? It's a little past nine thirty.
We wanted to set a date for the next workshop of the second part of this one, which needs to deal with the remainder of the work we did tonight and the template for the superintendent's evaluation and uh the goals for the superintendent.
I was gonna ask if um Debbie could send out another doodle poll, um, if that's okay, President Phillips?
It is, um, but a, a quick question, you know, cause we had an agenda setting today, right? And then we left a placeholder for evaluation. Um, I don't know if they're going, if they're available, but the whole board was gonna be there. So um, if they're available, we might be able to slip, you know, a couple of hours in there.
When is that?
The ninth, the closed session meeting on the ninth. It starts at four thirty right now.
Okay. Well, we can uh, I think we can talk, so we would do, how is the agenda? Is it a packed agenda or this is at least a two to three hour topic?
Well, the closed session that evening, cause we're gonna have a closed session in the beginning and the end, but the first closed session uh as of now is, is just the superintendent's evaluation. We thought we might be able to follow up from tonight, but we didn't get to it tonight.
Okay. Is everybody gonna be there for that?
It, it, it's, it's a regular closed session, so I would assume everybody would be there.
Okay. So what, how much time should we allow?
Right now it's scheduled from four thirty to six thirty, so
Okay.
I mean, we could, I mean theoretically, if you want it, we could start at four, which would be thirty minutes earlier. And then we can do two hours, uh, our two hours fifteen minutes.
And there, there are no other closed session items that?
We're doing labor negotiations that night, but we're gonna do that in the evening after we hear the uh the budget report and the FICMAT report and, and whatnot. So not at the same time.
Okay, I'm thinking you're trying to rush things. The superintendent evaluation is important and I think Dr. Hurst has been on the job now two, three weeks. And uh, two, okay, two weeks. You've, you've covered a lot of ground in the last couple of sessions that we've had. Uh, he also has to come up with some recommendations on some topics that were discussed tonight. I'd, I'd say uh, wait for his recommendations on uh what he's, what he wants to do with the, the discussions that we had tonight, the transition, the public hearing portion. And allow us some time maybe in June or July to more slowly get into the superintendent evaluation so that you're not extending the board meeting again, the next board meeting on June ninth with trying to add two hours or two and a half hours with this topic. That's me speaking, Jim. I don't know if you have a different thought on that?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I just having done these before, I know this is a, to do this topic right is at least a half day. And um because we have to talk about calendar and process and goal setting and uh the template that we wanna use. So it's.
Doodle poll it is. Doodle poll it is.
Okay, all right.
Trustee Phillips, I have a question. We go to closed session after we wrap with Mr. Brown and Mr. Garza, correct? Tonight or no?
Tonight.
Tonight, we do go to closed session?
No, we, yes, we do. We do. Well, no, we were gonna go to closed session for the superintendent evaluation, but we're not doing that, so we're not gonna go to closed session.
Okay, so when we conclude here, we are, we are finished for the night. We do not go to closed session?
Yeah.
That was it?
Yeah.
That was our time commitment, three hours tonight, so we.
Oh, closed session was gonna be with you guys anyway?
Yes.
All right, got it. I thought closed session was gonna be separate with, with staff. Okay, great.
So doodle poll, um, and then we have to do public comment. And just so I'm clear, um, because this is the next, we won't be with each other again until tomorrow. So you guys, are we going to do, I saw what Dr. Hurst said in the beginning. He likes it all in the beginning. Um, he said that in the chat. Trustee Smith Folds, you talked about transition. We talked about the hybrid too, and I just kinda explained a couple of reasons why I was a little uncomfortable with the hybrid. Um, but tomorrow, are we doing public comment at the beginning of the item? And are we okay with that as a group? Cause we have a board meeting tomorrow. This is what the agreement.
I, I don't think you should change tomorrow without some advanced notice of what you're doing. Just a suggestion. You might wanna mention it tomorrow night and, and, and lay, lay the groundwork for it, but that would just be my thought.
I, I, okay.
So, President Phillips, if we're gonna lay the groundwork tomorrow night, we need to come to a decision on what that groundwork is gonna be, cause we have a couple ideas floating out there, so we need to settle on one or at least one to try in the beginning. And am I wrong? Am I right or am I wrong with that? If we're gonna publicize something, we need to have an agreement or at least the majority of the board on what we're going to try first, correct? Not tomorrow, but what we're going to publicize about what we're going to try.
I, I believe where we left off was that Dr. Hurst was gonna make some recommendations on that at some point. So let him make the recommendations before you make any changes or any announcements tomorrow.
So don't make an announcement tomorrow.
No, I think, I think give Dr. Hurst time to make his recommendations to you based on what he'd heard all of you say. And then move forward with, with that plan, whatever the recommendations are.
Okay.
So may, may I ask what the comment on the chat was about then? I thought that was the recommendation he was giving. I could have been completely misread that, but I thought that's what he was doing.
I was too.
I'm sorry, I was responding to President Phillips' question, so that wasn't, it was my thoughts. But uh, I wanted to have the opportunity to speak with uh Mr. Brown and Mr. Garza because those are my thoughts, but I heard a lot of you say different things. So I wanted to just kinda run some things by them and get their feedback, if that's okay.
That's fine. Just the comment for me though, like I would like us to like do one, even if it's to do this and then do it for two months and then do another one. But I would, I'll just, as the person chairing the meeting, um, I would like for us to do one and I'm willing to try both, but I would just like us to do one at a time.
Dr. Hurst, we'll get some recommendations shortly.
Okay, guys, I think we're done with this item. Um, thank you, um, public comment. Um, do we have any public comment on this item? There are no hands, right, President Phillips? Okay, um, with that, uh, the next scheduled board meeting is tomorrow. Same bat time, same bat channel. Um, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Bye bye.